It's more.
Yes. With regards to the FERC building, didn't we talk about the need to master plan that site before we got too far into the details of their plans? I thought we had talked about that. To kind of get, make sure that we've got that site plan the way we want it before they get too far into design.
Remember that, Mark?
Wasn't it like the egress discussion mostly?
Yeah.
What I remember is that we committed to that, we committed to that northern part of that site being a childcare center. And that that may end up being the only other thing that ends up being located there because of the ability, parking and everything availability, but.
How, I mean, would that slow it down? Would that, would that be problematic if we decided to do a site plan on kind of a master site?
I think it would slow down.
I'm not real sure. I mean, we've done, I guess we'd be sketching in what, you know, what a building envelope could look like on that other area and how it would fit in there. But I, my feeling was that there, because we're probably not going to squeeze three in there, we'll easily be able to manipulate, manipulate.
And I'm just making sure we get the parking and the egress and ingress right. So that would be exactly what I'm thinking is do a building envelope and just get you in some.
I mean, I don't, I don't. I'm not, I'm not too worried about it personally. I think it was a comment by one of the.
Oh, it was, but I.
Missioners, I read that, yeah, but.
I remember we, we had talked about something down those lines.
Well, I think our main concern, Dick, was that everything sort of fell into some palette as we went forward. But, I mean, I vaguely remember that, too. And I think it was more around that than the egress. I think it was more about making sure we had three buildings that fit together.
I mean, I can sit down with, I mean, staff can kind of look at this and say, is it, is there, or is this going to create a problem for us now? But I don't think it will.
You know, I don't, I don't think you're crazy, Dick. I, I kind of remember we used to talk about a, like a Feng Shui. I don't know if I'd, if I'd put a wrench in the works right now, since there's only probably like Rick says, probably only going to be two entities opposed to trying to.
I think if we look at it with that lens, that's, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Evaluating the first site design with that in mind. Parking lot-ish thing on the west, northwest side will work with a daycare circulation. So we have been looking at it through that lens, Dick. We haven't necessarily drawn exactly what the daycare would look at, but I looked at the size of it, what we might need for parking and how the playground would work. Rick's right, the daycare eats up the most, the rest of the available land. But the way they end up with their circulation will fit nicely with the daycare.
Okay, with drop off and all the special needs of daycare. Cool. Good.
That's part of that, what she said, Rick's right.
I didn't hear that.
Checked out after.
I didn't hear that.
With the comments about brick and the negative points, should we look at brick again? I mean, as far as the negative points are associated with brick?
Yes.
I really.
About bricks.
I don't know. It's Eric's fault that it's on.
No, and it wasn't about brick, it was about stucco.
Right, right.
So, I'm okay with.
It feels a little misdirected.
Yeah, I'm totally okay with brick.
Do we have a regular scheduled meeting with the planning commission? Is that something that happens on an annual basis or is it?
We used to, but we can't get away.
I mean, I, I think if we just ask the planning commission to talk about brick in particular, not, no other non-natural materials. Let's see if we can carve out an exemption for brick and see what they say and then bring it back to us.
Would you all, would, would the majority of you be okay with looking at an exemption for brick?
Yeah.
Why wouldn't they talk about other things like metal and other things that are becoming more typical?
You always gotta do more. Brick, let me. Brick is easy because there are, there are a lot of historical examples of brick in town.
Historic is a good point.
You know, I, I think we've used brick on multiple municipal buildings and then there's the red ugly. And I, I think that's an easily defensible change to the code as opposed to.
What is the red ugly?
Sorry, that's the old name of it, the old.
BGVCC?
No, next to the old Wendy's. Ski Star Breck Associates. Yeah, that was called the red ugly. I never thought it was an ugly building either. That's the funny part. It's a beautiful building. No idea where that.
And I'm okay if it's associated with certain uses for buildings, especially if we use, but anyway, just this conversation I think is adding on to the brick use.
Well, we could certainly take a look at that. We've talked about that, having a work session on this. Kelly is right, there's other things that have come up as well. We've kind of been stumbling on one right now at the Gold Creek condos on the north end of town in terms of the materials they want to use. And doesn't meet our code either, although in other location, in other cities, it has been used as a durable material. So it could get to be a bigger discussion, but it'd be easier to just have the brick discussion. We met last June with the planning commission. There's a number of other code amendments that we still haven't brought to you also. So we'll kind of queue this up with those, but try to get it in at least medium priority.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Anything else on planning? Anybody see a need for a call up?
No.
Give Erin something to do for her last meeting. Legislative.
You have another chance.
First times I've ever seen. So we go right to. I don't remember ever not having Jeffrey have something to do in a meeting. What's he gonna do?
This is waste, just a waste of talent. It's a waste.
It really is.
You should stay home and protect your heart.
Public projects update.
Oh, this, this one's sure to be fun.
Hello, everybody. So we have two decisions for you in the memo, and I'd like to go over those first, and then we can take general questions if that works.
Yep.
Okay, first up is roundabout landscaping. Chris here, Chris is here to answer any questions you might have about the currently designed option versus the proposed change to concrete reducing the landscaping in the medians.
Questions?
Is there any, I guess, what is the benefit? Like, is there any concern in the winter of not having landscaping in the medians of it, people not seeing it or anything like that? Like, is there any benefit there?
I think there's enough vertical clearance there that there wouldn't be a benefit. You know, I think it just comes down to you reduce a little bit of maintenance, but as far as vehicle pedestrian safety, you need a little bit in the center island, but the medians, you know, four o'clock, we haven't seen any issues without having trees in that one.
Cause we don't, so this would actually be consistent with the four o'clock then, right?
Yeah, as designed, it's kind of like halfway, I would say between four o'clock and the north ones. And then if we did this alternative, then it would be consistent with four o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
And these medians are wider than four o'clock, though.
Yeah, there's some areas where they, they're variable width, so there's some areas where they're narrow, but in general, they're a little bit wider than the four o'clock ones, yeah.
Two options, sorry. Budget is equal, right?
Yeah.
And make.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, yeah, surprisingly, I thought there'd be some savings, but once I looked at it, it's basically a wash.
But maintenance is lower on the alternative.
Yeah, the, there'd be lower maintenance.
I read there'd just be one annual closure. Is that realistic? Or do you think there'd be closures multiple times through the year?
Be multiple. I'd have to talk to our parks maintenance a little bit more on what they would expect out of it. There wouldn't be like the north ones with the plantings of the annuals and covering them in the fall and, and quite all those steps. But there would be occasional maintenance needed.
They, they do a refresh of the four o'clock about once a year where they go in. Put the mulch in, fluff the mulch, get the weeds out of there.
Are you hiring? And I guess it'd be less, less water, right?
No water.
No water, perfect.
Dick?
The, I guess it's the current with the plantings in the medians. Does that, we, that's just drip irrigated, right? We're not doing any spray irrigation. It's all the, the low use drip.
It would all be drip. It's just trees and shrubs. So it would be lower water usage and spray irrigation.
We, do we feel confident in specing the right trees, getting them to live? I know we've been through a few trees over the years and are we pretty confident that we've now have enough practice where we can get them to live?
I think it's always a little bit of an issue. We might have to replace some if we do it. It's a tough environment, especially in the middle of the road. So.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, these areas where it's a little lower speed and we do less mag chloride, they survive a little better, but I don't think we'll ever have 100% survival rate. In these areas, we have mostly cottonwood trees. I think we have a little bit of aspens and evergreen trees. We're kind of doing consistent with what we find survives best in the, in the town.
Cool. Thanks.
I always worry a little bit about when we have trees in a median approaching a roundabout that, that, that a driver, if you're, you know, the, a driver is approaching in there, the median's on their left side. If there are trees that can somewhat block their vision of what they're coming into and what cars or pedestrians might be. Cause a pedestrian crosswalk is on the closest part that you're going to encounter on a roundabout as you're entering it. And so I'm not a huge fan, just because I think they level up everything a little bit.
Yeah, the pedestrians not shown on here, is that where the stamped concrete is? Is that where the pedestrian walkway goes across?
So currently, we don't have pedestrian crosswalks around this. We have it designed for future addition. Once there's a sidewalk on the west side, but right now, the one going north, south and Watson, we're trying to push everyone toward crossing further away so buses can come in and out. The ones going across the road, we have a design. We've checked some minimum site distances, but we have a design so we could add those easily in the future when needed.
Okay.
But we will.
Have pedestrian crossings at French Street. And you would think whatever we do at Watson, we're gonna want to do a French, because they're gonna be right next to each other for consistency. And that's just a lot going on in that short distance.
How difficult is it to add that pedestrian crossing?
It would be a little bit of concrete removal on the center island.
So why don't we just do it as we're doing this project, knowing that we're gonna get it, we're gonna get a sidewalk on the other side at some point? Why, why would we come back and take stuff out that we put in?
I mean, are we, how confident are we on the timeline for French?
Well, I don't know about timeline, but I hate going in and jacking concrete up that we know we're gonna change at some point.
Well, and I worry, I don't know if there's anything to this, but if you have two roundabouts, yeah, as Rick is saying, two roundabouts right in a row, and you're training people that you don't need to look for pedestrians in one, but you need to look for pedestrians in the second one. I, I'm worried that people will just think, oh, I can just fly through both, but I don't know.
Roundabout doesn't get built until the west side.
So those changes were coming at the same time, the French Street Roundabout and then parking search there necessitates. What about the west? I'm, I'm saying.
Not doing anything at four o'clock.
Right, but the four o'clock you have pedestrian.
Right.
Right? So this is gonna be before the four o'clock. So if you're not training the driver to look for pedestrians in this first one, and then they go into the four o'clock and they have, like, there's a lot of pedestrians there. I don't, I don't know. Maybe this is nothing, but I just think you can fly through the first roundabout and.
Four o'clock's pretty slow. I'm not as worried about four o'clock personally.
We'll think about it and see what C dot thinks about it as well. We're in the middle of trying to just get the okay to go from C dot. So we don't want to change anything till we.
Yeah.
Right. And add it in.
And maybe we just do the cut and concrete like Eric's saying, but don't.
Don't do the ramps.
Paint the crosswalk and everything else, just stuff.
Sign it, please don't cross here.
Cause it goes nowhere.
Other questions?
All right, how's everybody feel about this?
The, which one, the alternative?
Which one do you prefer?
I prefer the alternative.
Dick?
I, I prefer the original, but I can live with the alternative. I mean, it probably makes more sense.
Dennis?
Original.
Jeffrey?
All about the alternative.
We know what Kelly's gonna say.
Oh, yeah.
Kelly?
And I agree, I think the original plus it would be an example, less maintenance landscaping to maybe serve as an example for north roundabout and medians that have a tremendous.
But do you want concrete medians or you want stuff in the median?
I want stuff in the median, and that could be an example for our northern medians that require a ton of lane closures. And aesthetically, it's way more pleasing than colored concrete. I'm 100% option one.
Well, I'm alternative because I think having stuff in these medians is ridiculous for us to have to close the road down to get out there to do stuff. I think at this point, the amount of traffic we have year round in this town.
But I think we lost, so. I think Dick has to decide then, right? Cause that was, you said original.
I mean, I prefer the, the, the trees. I like the trees then.
Oh, geez. If I knew that, I wouldn't have come back.
With the original. Right, did I, did we count that right? Landscape.
Wishy-washy.
I said I preferred the first one, but I could live with the second.
Let's wait a few weeks and then we'll revoke.
Oh, wow. That was, that goes way back.
Knew it was coming.
All right.
One was the LED light conversion for the ball fields. And the new pricing is above the budget that was first established in 2018 and then added to in 2020. We're projecting about $180,000 will be needed to complete the work. And that's converting both fields. The add in 2020 was to add in the second field. There were some additions to the project such as lightning protection that was actually pretty expensive. And now we're having the electrician do a lot more of the work. Prior, public works was gonna support some of the, some of the activities, like use our man lift and that sort of thing. But now we have to rent all that because we just don't have the staff to support the electrician. And we're also gonna do porta potties and temp power because of the seasonality of getting that done. So it isn't just inflation. Some of it is inflation on pricing and some of it is additional scope to get it done.
How are you feeling? You okay with this? You want to go back to candles?
Going back, no. You know, everything's gonna be more expensive than it was in 19. We know that. These ball fields play a big part of our recreation plan, so I'm in favor.
Dick?
Well, I don't know.
Here comes wishing.
I'm in favor, absolutely. Can somebody really hit a ball that far where you need light protection up there?
Lightning light from the sky.
Gotcha, for the dark sky. I, I thought you meant protect from softballs. Somebody, nobody can hit a ball that far.
We, we can hit a ball that far.
Oh, yeah.
Everyone understands.
I, I'm on board, yeah.
I'll explain after, yeah.
Thank you.
That was an easy one.
Great.
Okay, general questions?
Questions.
Coin Valley Road. I think Kelly and I both talked to Ford from Broken Compass, who was worried about, you know, he's sort of at the dead end now of a pretty long way through. Have we discussed any easier ways to get into Continental Court, even though he's, it's, it's county? Is there any way to go through any of those properties instead of, you know, you know, you're gonna have to go around and back in? I don't know if there's any way to get.
Like earlier off airport or from Dennis?
Either, either Dennis or airport.
Not thought about it, but we can look.
And he's not that far south of Coin, so you're, I don't know what you're gaining by trying to.
Is he worried people are gonna be angry and like turning around in his area or that his customers?
I think he's just worried that without Coin being there, it's really.
It will be.
Gonna affect his business. And I don't disagree with him. I told him it's, there's no, there's no choice on this. This has to be done. So he understands that, but. Are we planning VMS signage and?
VMS is getting delivered shortly to start alerting of the closure. We can think about, you know, business open signs. I hadn't really thought about that like we do on Main Street when we have closures. And if that would be effective, but we can start thinking about some special signage to support anyone who thinks they need some additional wayfinding down airport.
Jenna, the biggest questions I was getting is, is it gonna be closed and people worried they couldn't get through there? So.
It will be closed.
Completely. But there's an alternate route.
Valley Brook would be the alternate route.
Down and around.
Right. I think the, the sooner we get that word out, the people can still get through there, then.
Yeah, we had to procure some VMSs. We thought we could use ours. Ours are busy down by Watson, so we're getting the contractor to rent some for us. We'll get those out ASAP. So we'll think about special signage. I can start going talking to those guys and see if anyone else, if they need anything.
Well, yeah, probably Animal Lovers, Broken Compass. I don't know how much traffic the Jacuzzi place gets or, you know, Ryan's really, there's a welding shop there.
Or CMC.
Those guys do a fair amount of retail, the welding.
We have to make sure that everybody there knows that what we're doing.
The weed shops. They can, they always need more wayfinding.
He lies easy.
Direct business outreach.
Is there any way, I think another concern I heard from some of those businesses is that in the summer, a lot of their business is pedestrian based from the bike path. Is there any sort of temporary bridge solution that would work in that area?
We will have to look at that, not visualizing it.
Pedestrian and bicycles.
Bicycle.
Stay open. So they'll have a different, we'll have a short detour route on the rec path. There's basically an old grade closer to the highway and we're gonna do some temporary paving. That'll be one of the first.
How do they get?
About someone coming from the bike path, like I rode my bike in and wanna go to Broken Compass. So we might have to wayfind them through like River Park area. That's a good idea. Bridge there we put in with River Park.
Blue 52.
Yeah.
That could be okay. Maybe we can do some of that special business signage there. That might even just help in general. People be like, oh. So.
Be bruised and blue.
Blue 52.
So.
Temporarily.
Is Dennison, will you be able to get to Dennison Plaza Road? From the airport. Coin Valley to Dennison Plaza?
No.
Airport.
No, because Coin is, Coin is closed closer to the highway.
So this whole, so this whole Coin Valley is closed. Okay, got it.
We'll be able to recycle. It'll be stopped right after recycling.
You can go down Airport Road to recycling, to Continental Court to Dennison, but then you just have to come back out down airport. Yeah, come down from like Peak Seven to recycle.
Yes, you can.
You can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Recycle's right on that corner.
So you can, the closure's here. It's this, this bit here.
So you can go the recycle the long way. You'd have to come.
From town.
Yeah, okay, got it. Okay, I misunderstood what she said. Okay, thanks.
I appreciate your efforts with the businesses. I think, you know, we finally got some businesses out there, that, out there that are taking and we want to support them any way we can.
We'll go chat with them, especially once we get them VMSs up. I'm glad they're paying attention already, but we'll, we'll get with them and see what we can do to support them.
Other public projects, business. Going once, going twice, mobility update. Thank you.
Hey, Matt.
Good afternoon. How are y'all? All right, real quick things, two quick things. Sustainable Breck Plan update has kicked off, so thank you for that. We have sent off a survey to you all, so if you could please reply to that, getting some vision and some alignment from you guys. And then next steps will be public outreach, so that should begin here in the next couple of weeks. So we're moving pretty quickly on that. Any questions on sustainable wreck? Ridership wise, in your packet has some ridership numbers for the free ride and we are right on par with our 2019 record year, where we're looking to hit 1.3 million rides this year. So obviously, we're only two months into the year with data, but we're looking like we're gonna have a really good positive year, so excited for that. And that's all that I have for today.
Still looking good for the trolley for Main Street this summer.
It is, we can basically confirm that it'll, it'll run just based on construction that's happening, so, but otherwise it will run 11 to eight daily.
Right.
Someone else?
Encouraging, encouraging.
All right. Thanks, Matt. How's childcare?
We did have some minutes in your packet from the last childcare meeting and we do not have any minutes from our housing committee meeting, which was this morning. So don't know if you have any general questions about either of those things.
How did the Summit County Public Health Meeting go last week and did they give additional guidance?
Yeah, they gave guidance. So now all the childcare centers will follow what the school district has done. So based off of a exposure, exposure letter compared to a quarantine. So that gives a ton of relief to our centers. It basically enters us back into a stage that we were previously of, if your kid is sick, don't send them to school. So.
I agree.
I have a question. So this didn't come in the packet, but I did read it in the paper, so don't know if it's true. 600 kids are on the waiting list. Is that true?
It's countywide. Yeah, we, we have it broken out by, and actually it was in a packet, I think, potentially three meetings ago, but we have it broken out by north and south. And Breckenridge makes up the, the maji- majority of that north figure. In Breckenridge, we sit about 355.
North or south?
North is Breckenridge, South County is the other figures. Does that make sense?
No.
So, sorry. Sorry, I mixed those up. So we make up the South County and then everybody else is North. So we in Breckenridge have 355 on a waiting list and that's de-duped. So that's true.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we making any progress on supporting home? You know, home care, the small little home centers where, you know, helping them get licensed or helping understand how big they can get before they need to be licensed, just to kind of supplement the waiting list?
That's an ongoing discussion on the childcare committee and it's become a, a bigger conversation as we start to look toward countywide tuition assistance. So that's ongoing.
I'd sure like to support that any way we can, you know, any way we can help facilitate those, as long as they're safe. I mean, we want some kind of criteria to ensure they're safe. I, I mean, absolutely, but any way we can support that. Cause I think that's gotta be part of the solution. We can't go 600, you know, there's no way. And it's all, I mean, I know it's heavy at the younger years where the ratios are higher and just seems like a natural fit to help.
I agree, yeah. You do it. Yeah. How many childcare facilities are private and how many are run by towns in the county?
Um, none are run by the town.
None of them are run by the town. So they're all non, we support the big four, which are nonprofits in Breckenridge. And county.
I can't think of any large centers that.
There's only two others. There's only two aspects besides our four, and they're both nonprofits as well.
Thank you.
Encouraging discussion with Elizabeth this week and she said that they really are pushing to start to break ground on the Smiths Ranch childcare facility in May. So that would be a big help. I mean, that would be six, between 60 and 80 kids, you know, depending on what size they go for. And then the Board of County Commissioners is also looking at, remember when we talked in our last meeting about that sprung structure that they were using over in Vale? And so they're just, you know, thinking, they know we need more than one facility. And so they're considering if there's any opportunity for that. But I'll be honest with you, I had a very discouraging call with Greta this morning and she's the director of Little Red, who said that now, you know, this says each of the centers are down one to four staff positions. This was Wednesday. Today, it's three to four, each center, three to four staff positions. And so like people get hired and then they end up not coming or they get hired and then they, you know, take a restaurant job. Yeah, some losing housing for sure, but it's like, there's not a silver bullet. You know, that's what I always ask is like, is it housing? What can we do? But there's just not one thing. It's a lot of things. And so. What can we do? But there's just not one thing. It's a lot of things. And so that's the, you know, the big question and concern. With any of these new facilities or expansions, it's like, how are we going to staff? And so. We've been definitely talking about this a lot at a childcare committee and what kind of relationship can we get? Maybe with the high school or maybe with CMC as like a feeder program, because we could keep, you know, the, the primary teacher in the classroom. And then the secondary or tertiary teacher might be who has less experience, but would still be an extra set of hands or a float. A floater. So, you know, we're certainly trying to brainstorm the situation.
What those guys get paid?
I mean, it's, there's a variety. I think it's like maybe nineteen is the lowest right now and twenty-six maybe is the highest. Not including the directors and admin.
And you need.
You do. You have early childhood education. I mean, these, yeah, these are teachers. I think there's, it just depends on the qualifications. Each school is a little different and like there's licenses or. You know, kind of technician. And then there's more masters. I mean, a lot of the teachers up here do have masters. Because they've been making this, their career.
Kelly, have you talked to Dave Aston at CMC?
We talked to him a long time ago. It's obviously time for, I mean, it's just so desperate right now. It's obviously time for another discussion.
My question for him might be, is there demand to start a program specific to early childhood?
Well, they have an early childhood program.
Oh, they do.
Yeah, we need like even probably more than a living lab because we need so many teachers. I think we need like a credit system or, you know, something like that. But it is time to revisit that. Greta and I were. Lamenting the same feeling today.
Well, there are classes, so I mean, maybe just networking to start. My daughter's taking one.
There's going to have been some great things in Aspen with their CMC campus and the town of Aspen or city of Aspen. That we can reach out to and get some best practices as well.
But we were talking actually about CMC, yes, a couple of days ago and their. Their numbers are way down as well. And so, you know, the early childhood is down, that program's down for a number of reasons, I guess.
Their enrollment or their teachers?
Enrollment. People are going to tech schools and going straight in. There's, I mean, anyone can have a job.
That could be housing too. I mean, we're.
Oh, for sure.
You know.
Yeah.
Anything else for housing and childcare? Alrighty, committee reports. Police advisory, anything?
Well, you've read it. It's, you know, staffing's challenging. You know, Dave did start a, a police academy at CMC in Breck. We used to be, we had sent everybody to Glenwood. And, you know, the chief and the RPD has partnered with, with CMC. This was what, year and a, year ago, year and a half ago? Two years, maybe? So that helps. I mean, that helps getting people in that. But it's challenging right now. So when you see, you know, we may not have the traffic enforcement and all this, all the other stuff. It's, I mean, some of the, I mean, some of it's. Just numbers.
The enforcement on the election signs.
The ones in the right ways. I got, I got a squirching letter from our clerk, I think.
Sorry. Anything else for police advisory? Any other committee?
I'd just say as far as the cops go, I mean, I hope they will come to us if they think we can sweeten the pot to help with recruitment. I mean, I think, you know, personally, I don't know what you guys get paid, but if we need to up the starting wage a little bit. I think that's a small price to pay for public safety.
He's the law and order.
I'm all about law and order. I'd put my hat in the ring, but I get some testing that my mind.
All right, events. Shannon's not here, so we don't know.
Oh, I was there. There was an events committee meeting. What is she, oh my gosh.
I don't know. I mean, the minutes are in there. There's nothing.
That's what it is.
Do we know Oktoberfest date yet? I looked in there and I didn't see it, but I just, I didn't know if you guys kicked.
It is known.
Do you know it?
Is it September or October?
Twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Friday.
Yeah.
Thanks very much.
Cool. The BTO is helping with Trigby's ninetieth. That's awesome.
When I moved here, Trigby was a young man. So was Jeffrey. So.
Still looks better than I do.
Some lifestyle differences.
That'll be a cool one.
Any other questions? I can get other people to answer for you. Thank you, Tamara.
All right. Good update. Twenty twenty-two trails project update.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Great to see you all. A quick recap on our master plan where we are. We held our second public open house last Thursday. For public engagement as part of our master planning process. We had about fifty to sixty people in attendance for that. So happy with the attendance there and very happy to see people in person and nice to get together again. DTJ Design, our consultants on this master plan, wanted to present some of the overall themes and concepts they've been getting. From all of the public engagement efforts over the last six, eight months or so, from focus groups, one-on-one interviews. Three surveys that were conducted and then meetings with BOSAC, meetings for the Social Equity Commission. And then all the work that they've been doing on a lot of conservation data and planning that way. They wanted to present, as, as council has directed us to come up with a decision-making framework. Some of those overall concepts and wanted to bounce those off the, the general public for some feedback. Including such, such things as what that decision-making framework might include. Some possible ideas of trail loops, possible ideas of management plan zones. As a way to sort of manage and disperse folks on our trail network, possible land acquisition criteria. All of those slides and the data from the fall community survey and the winter survey are available on the project website. Which is brekost.com. And following that meeting, we are scheduling a special BOSAC meeting on Monday, March fourteenth. So just coming up next week from noon to two. So we have both Bill Mangle, who was unable to attend our open house. And Bill Campy with DTJ Design to really just walk BOSAC through everything, make sure all of their questions are answered. And, and hopefully then we can also come to council on March twenty-second. Bill Campy is traveling but available virtually and would love to also bring council up to speed on where we are on this project. And just sort of the direction, the feedback they're getting before we start to finalize and really draft and get into this plan itself. Kind of depending on how that March fourteenth or the council meeting goes on the twenty-second. That, that may bump back our original timeline. And if so, we'll, we'll deal with it. We had planned on having a draft ready by the end of the month and a more full presentation to BOSAC on the twenty-eighth. But we'll see how these two meetings go on with BOSAC and also with you all on the twenty-second to see if we've captured what needs to be captured. Or if there's still some more work to do. Any questions on that?
Can we get a meeting minutes from this upcoming BOSAC DTJ meeting?
Sure. And as all BOSAC meetings are also open to the public, we are going to host a hybrid meeting. We have some folks traveling as well. So it will be available also, and I, I need to update that link on the town calendar. But that will be there and we can certainly share minutes as well.
You know what I was, I, I was a question I have and it's just kind of anecdotal. You know, like in most graphs, the higher number means, you know, when things go up, that means more people. And then when they go down, it's less people. These graphs are all juxtaposed. Like in other words, the, the higher numbers look are a spike. I mean, the lower numbers are spiked and the higher numbers are lower. Do you guys notice that on these, on the?
What have you seen from them?
From the open house.
That was a lot, oh, on the open house?
Oh, the stuff you sent me.
Yeah, because I think a lot of the, the full community survey that was done in the fall months had people allocate their time. Well, how much time do you spend hiking, fat biking? And so it was percentages of time. So like zero percent, I don't do that activity at all. And so it, it does make for kind of an odd looking graph, but it's really how people allocate their time.
But like.
Was that the one?
No, the one I noticed was fat biking. And, and I'm looking, oh, a lot of people in fat biking because the thing is really high. Was that, that, the, the question was, how many people never fat bike? And, and that was a spike.
So, yes, so it was how much time do you allocate to fat biking? And so there were a huge percentage of people on that one that said zero percent. They don't fat bike whatsoever. So that was the, the big spike in that graph.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying, when it, when it's, and there again, I mean, I, I can train, retrain my brain to, you know, think opposite.
And I can walk you through that too. If you want to sit down with me sometime.
Yeah, but I, I just think for, I mean, I don't, I've never seen a graph like that. I've never seen a graph that the, the higher the spike, the lower the.
All based on the questions that were asked. And if it's tough when you're trying to get people to allocate time for things. So that's, yeah, kind of an unusual looking graph.
So I see this website, Brek OST, and it has, I think you can find, like I just looked at. I didn't know that all this stuff was on here, the survey results and things. I mean, what do you feel like? Do you think we should just go through everything on this website? Because I, I feel like we've been having these updates, but. Basically just saying like, everything's going well, everything's moving forward. And so I'm just, like, is there any information out there? That we can be reviewing to make sure we sort of know what's going on in the process and.
You know, I, I think the, the slides from which were, were updated, I, I know what we sent around to BOSAC a week in advance was very, very draft with a lot of placeholders. So the slides that are on the website is what DTJ presented that evening. And it goes over the concepts, which I think would be great. And we can certainly send out if you need bigger versions of those. Like the concept of management zones and what that might look like, a potential decision-making framework. And some of those things are included in there. And again, we have some big maps we can show you of those. But that's really kind of where DTJ has landed. They've been doing a lot of that, just analysis and looking at all of our. Available conservation and natural resource data to figure out where the best conservation areas lie, where they might draw some of those management zones. Based on topography and conservation, on water, on trail density, that sort of thing.
So do you have those or that's just things that they've been talking about?
Those, those are in the slides and I, I can also send out or send some links, I think, to some bigger maps that we had available for those.
And is there any like language that goes along with the slides? Because there's a bunch of slides. I mean, I'm just wondering how, you know, are there notes or something to go along with the slideshow?
There, I, I think most of the, the meat of the discussion happened in small groups and breakout sessions. So we had some paper for folks to actually fill out or take the time to fill it out and bring it back in, their comments on all of these. Concepts and folks, if they felt they were on the mark, if they're off the mark, what other suggestions they had. For example, on trail loops, are they in favor of the concept? Kind of yes or no? Have alternatives, like what other ideas? You know, what would fit that? So a lot of that was handwritten feedback that was taken by DTJ.
The trail loops already exist, right? So does, is that, does a trail loop now mean this is one way?
Is that? No, not at all, not at all. So the idea is that we've always had this dispersion approach in our trail network that we try to disperse people out. We try to have a lot of access points throughout town, which we have about a hundred and thirty access portals. The idea being we never want people to pile in their cars and pile up at trailheads to be able to access the trail network. And so that's always been the concept is to disperse people out so that people can still enjoy a good user experience. The concept of trail loops is one we've been using for probably a good decade or so. We get a lot of requests from the Welcome Center. It's on CoTrax, which is a great statewide app of our trails. And it's trying to, to again, push people out into some different areas without overwhelming some of our popular trailheads like B and B. So oftentimes the Welcome Center will, will ask us like, hey, we're getting requests for a family-friendly trail. Like what can we tell them? And if you know our trail network, we have about twenty different names for things. And if you try to give directions to a friend, it's a very long list of names. And so years ago, we had a color-coded system that would say, here's a loop. Just follow the orange arrows and it might take you on fifteen different trails. But it would complete a loop. And so that is, I think, the concept DTJ is proposing. It's just identifying some of these loops to push people out. Depending on the experience that they're wanting to get. If it's a really long mountain bike ride or a short, you know, three-generation family, family hike. That's not more than a mile in length and just to give them some options of, of places to go.
So it's basically like just mapping with trail. Ability level.
Yeah, it is. And it's, it's, you know, we can always revisit the idea that we used years ago with maybe a color coding. Just follow the orange, you know, tags along the trail to, to be able to follow that loop if you're unfamiliar. That's the overall concept. It's not at all directional or forcing a specific use. It's just looping together so many of our trails. That have a lot of different names as you try to make, make a loop depending on your activity.
It's not really looping them together because they're all.
No, no.
It's just mapping.
It's, it's like creating a loop experience for a user, whether someone is hiking or biking or whatever they're doing. Like here's a potential loop you could do if you want to hike for two miles only. You could, you know, follow this, these particular trails.
Okay.
It's just kind of a communication tool and a way to also disperse people across the network and not crowd them to busy areas.
So I'm on Brek OTG. It, it, where do I find in this is thirty-five pages, where do I find this specific master plan stuff? Because right now, you know, we have, you know. Executive summary, all this other.
The Destination Management Plan.
Brek OST.com.
I'll send you the link. Open House recap, that's where the.
I just sent you a link, Jeffrey, if you want to click on it.
Correct Destination Management.
You have to do, you have to do.
But I think for me, with all these various, I went to the open house and at a high level concept, I think all the consultants' ideas. Are great tools. And we see how they work together. I think that will help clarify the direction of the master plan. Especially seeing how our different kind of decision-making tools could help us. In the next ten years, we're likely going to deal with pressure for one-directional trails or e-bikes. To see how that framework of tools doesn't work, works on a large scale and can help us with controversial issues we might see. Right. And I, I think that's their overall goal is to, to not get very prescriptive, like our previous plans were very, very prescriptive. And it was more of a, a community development tool, especially for the trails. And so this is meant to be a guiding document for us. So that as things come up, we're able to run it through this decision-making framework and make the best decisions with the information at hand.
I will say that, um, once this, you know, we come, have some proposals and some, get to the meat of it. I, I just hope that we still include or that we remember to include winter use.
Absolutely.
And I think that's with that meeting on the twenty-second, that's the opportunity for council to say, okay, these are the themes that we need. Well, for DTJ to say, here are the themes that are going to be included. Here's the overview of everything. And if you don't hear what you want, you can say. This is what, this is what I, I need to, to see winter included, you know, or I need this data in order to make a decision, that sort of thing. So that's what, that's what I'm hoping this meeting will do is to have this final, because like. Yeah, this, we can glean some information from this presentation, but I don't feel like, like we don't, we don't have that decision-making tool, right? So like, like, we don't, we don't know what that actually looks like, that sort of thing. So I think, I think this will go a long way. To hopefully make sure that this group is heard and make sure that we can also hear DTJ so that we can say, okay, you're on the right track. Or, you know, maybe we want to go over here a little bit more, that sort of thing. So that's what, and, and the same thing for open space in the meeting next week. Yeah, and I went to the, the open space meeting, the BOSAC meeting. And I was so pleased with how thoughtful the commissioners were and what a great job. And that's why I'd really like their. Because not everyone sitting up here is going to be able to make that meeting. And so I really think it's important that we consider all those comments. And each of them has a little bit of a different background, different points, you know, so capturing their comments on what's presented, I think, will be really important. For this group.
I was hoping this was more of a planning document.
I'm not blown away by what we're getting. I won't lie. I Oops, we didn't have to pay somebody to come up with loops. There's almost zero talk about signage. Which, when we talked about this at the start, was a really big deal for me. And I think our signage package is sort of just all over the place. And we just don't. And the fact that they did not present a signage package to us. I I'm sort of annoyed that that's not part of what we're doing. The other thing that I don't see a lot of, you know, in 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 the decision, the framework for new trails, there is virtually zero thought given to impact and amount of people that are going to those management zones. And the trailhead use and you know, for instance, they have the Roseback in here that we decided as a group, we didn't want to build because it's overwhelming and already overwhelmed system. I don't I don't really understand why we would even come back to that without some thought along that about where that should be going. So honestly, I'm I'm a little bummed at where we are right now. And to think that this is going to be approved in April, I think is a huge stretch. And I think DTJ needs to know that
Hmm.
at least from my standpoint, I'm not ready to approve. I mean, from, you know, what I read through this, through the stuff that you presented, unless there's a bunch more that they're going to present to us, I am
Mm hmm.
not I'm I'm not ready. It's not what I wanted. Let me just put it that way.
Yeah.
And you know, I'm not, this is not reflective on you guys in any way. But, you know, when we have these people come and do the uh, the walkable brick type thing from the gondola or whatnot. You know, they they come up with a plan, they come, they present us the plan. And they say, we like that, we don't like that. And then they go away and then they come back with another plan. And we just kind of tweak it incrementally as we go along. I mean, DTJ, alls alls we get is is kind of a a recap from you guys. And I'm sure you're conveying what we're saying to them. But I think, you know, that there's always the risk of losing a little bit in interpretation. So I mean, you know, and there again, uh, the the meeting that you guys are doing on the fourteenth or something. I think some of the, some of these guys aren't even be there. It's gonna be remote, right?
No, they're uh, Bill Campy and Bill Mangle are going to be in person.
Okay.
For BOSAC. But not for ours, right?
Yeah.
They'll be remote.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, how much money are we paying them? I mean, it seems like they could show up, but.
Call a special meeting to try to get him in here quickly. And he just happened to have another trip lined up.
Bill did. Yeah.
So.
I mean, but Campy's worked with us for a while.
Mm hmm.
And he's always, you know, his on these other projects, he's always checked in incrementally and hung with us for a while. And, you know, kind of in in this time, you know, like, when when I was at the the meeting, the last BOSAC meeting, they were both remote. Or at least one of them was, yeah. This is if this is my own. And again, it's not reflective on you guys at all. It's just. Anything else?
Oh, what?
Oh, are we gonna? Okay. I was just wondering.
Okay, so we're Are you asking the same thing?
Two, two topics for you today. So the next one is our twenty twenty two trail projects, just because we are working with our partners, trying to solidify our our calendar. We're in the midst of hiring right now our summer seasonals. Um, and so we wanted to bring forward the trails that we are um, hoping to work on this summer um, pending your direction. And uh, BOSAC has had a chance to look at these also at their last meeting. Um, the first one is the Betties to Chantilly Connection. Um, you can see that almost in the middle of the map. Um, this trail is a little over four thousand feet in length. And it is envisioned to be um, a big emphasis for our Friends of Rec volunteer events this summer. Um, we also have a a commitment to the Rocky Mountain Youth Corps. And they're funded through One Track Mine Foundation. And so this is a really ideal project to work on throughout the summer months with a lot of community groups, including the Rocky Mountain Youth Corps. Um, a joint project with the county. This is on um, joint land and they're supportive of this project. Um, this project has also been vetted. We we discussed it at our our um, annual open house last June. Um, we're just in the waiting for Adam to sign the decision memo for NEPA. So this one came back as an all clear on this one with no um, no issues uh, to worry about. Um, the Mineral Hill Phase.
Yeah. Um, could you expand that map? Or just maybe Scott?
It's a static, but we can try and zoom in on it.
Where's it go? Where's it? It's Shin. He picks up at Chantilly?
Mm hmm.
And then? So.
And down to Betties. Hillside or Willland.
Easier to see back here. I don't know if you can turn around. No, it's a little too close to me. It's giving me vertigo. No, that's not good.
Jeffrey, do you want to?
Yeah, that'd be good.
So the way I would describe that connection is that if if you enter the lower end of Betties, so the French Gulch, French Creek end of Betties, so the lower end.
Yeah, I get you. Yep.
Northern end.
Yep.
And then there are a couple turns, that last turn before you have the long sort of flattish top, that last turn, it would spur from that point. And it would climb from that turn up to Chantilly Trail, which, as you know, is in Western Sky Ranch.
Yep.
And then it would connect to that point. That's how that that's what that will go for about four thousand feet.
Yeah, that's gonna be a great connection.
Um, so that is number one on the list. Um, number two is an extension. Um, as you all know, we completed Mineral Hill Phase One last year, which is a hiking only trail. Um, Mineral Hill Phase Two, we would love to work on, actually, the county wants to take the lead on this one this summer. They have um, a three week commitment with the older Rocky Mountain Youth Corps folks. Um, and they see this as an ideal project for them to really um, dig into. And there's going to be a little bit of crossover and sharing some trails with a dismount area to get to the actual peak and the viewpoint there of Mineral Hill. But folks who who want to have a full hiking experience would be able to have that from the Mineral Hill Phase One. Or, as you know, you can loop a lot of those trails together, or if you're on your bike and cut over, just dismount to get the great view um, and come back. And that total length there is about seventy six hundred feet. So it's kind of kind of a long one. Um, that one, the county is hoping to really put the youth corps on a college age youth corps. And then the third one, um.
Question, is that starting at side door?
So that would start at the, I mean, how I would describe it is, um, let's start from the west side, sorry, the east side. So where um, Mineral Hill currently comes out onto Rich Gulch.
Got it.
That's where it would swing back and continue up. It would go to the summit of Mineral Hill and like Anne described, there being out and back at the summit because there's a, there's like a rocky summit cone there. So you would leave your bike and walk to the top if you were on a bicycle. And then it would continue down and connect to the top of side door. That's correct.
Thank you. So um, is the topography Scott like, kind of like the uh, old Mineral Hill Rock uh, scree field?
The very summit is, but to to go from like Rich Gulch up to the summit is is in actually clear cut, but we were waiting for many years for the Forest Service to clear that out. So it's like cleared former forested area.
So it's, it won't be so technical, it will be ridable for Carol.
Sort of parallel linking or prospect.
Somewhat at a better grade, yes. Um, and the other is, the other factor up there is that um, Drew Goldsmith is potentially um, he has applied for a driveway permit for the St. Paul load at the summit roughly of Mineral Hill. And so that'll have to be adjusted to accommodate his driveway as well as some connectivity up there. But yes.
A rough is there for that.
Yep. And there's also a connection out to Prospect Road, so that's not completely separated from the road. So you can spur off to it if you need to.
Got you.
Okay, thanks Scott. And then the third one is the, can you zoom up a little bit to the north? Um, Tiger Road to Galena Gulch. Um, just an opportunity to get people off um, Tiger Road a little bit sooner if they're coming um, from the west. Um, and this one, we are really anxious to work with Volunteers for Outdoor Colorado again. Um, VOC, and this would be a really ideal project for them. We can camp them in the near vicinity and really we get so much work out of these folks. They bring great numbers in for us and good partners. We we put a little bit of a hold the last couple of years where we were so focused on the Rocky Mountain Youth Corps, but um, we'd love to work with VOC again, and this is a really ideal project. It's a little over thirty three hundred feet to uh, connect up there, but we think would be just a really good connection and good opportunity, of course, to get people off of of Tiger Road.
Off a Summit Gulch Road, it would allow you to bypass the climb on Summit Gulch Road onto a single track trail to get up almost to Galena Ditch.
Will that leave right from the Tiger dredge parking lot?
It'll be up the road a little bit because of uh, land ownership patterns. So it'll be up the road maybe a hundred yards, maybe two, two hundred yards from, it'll be again to the east from the dredge parking lot.
Mm hmm. Little jog down the road.
Thank you.
Um, and and discussions with BOSAC, too. Um, we had a couple of other projects we were talking about. One is just completing Little Mountain. Um, as you know, that's a hiking only trail and we have a lot of um, fantastic rock work that our crew will work on very early in the season to get that up and running. Um, so that one is on the list. And then another one that came about is a high priority for BOSAC. And we've been talking about this for a little bit of time. Um, the current towed alley trail as it exists through cucumber gulch. Um, cuts off hydrologic flow between fens, which is not good. And it's really bisecting some really high quality habitat there. What we would like to do is reroute that entire trail along um, the perimeter to to the base of Peak Eight. And knowing that Peak Eight is already a busy busy place, if there's going to be another hotel there, that seems like a a more uh, logical entry point. Um, but that said, we have a lot of planning to do for this particular project, just in and planning the alignment and planning how in the world we really restore that, how we keep people out who are so used to using that trail. So we may not get to construction this year. Um, there was also a a grant that we received back in two thousand and four for some of the trails in here. And so we also need permission from our grantee, which was land and water conservation funding, just to make sure they're okay with the alignment, which hopefully they will be because it's it's better for the biodiversity and and water resources on this property. But um, but we are planning um, just a better alignment on that property.
So it'll go to Peak Eight rather than going to the Peaks?
Peak Seven, like opposite the
Parking lot. So we'll abandon that whole just
Yeah.
Area.
And
We re-vedge that or?
That would be ideal. We we've tried to find a better connection and it gets really wet to try and follow the perimeter along ski hill road there. And it's just, I don't know how how we can do it easily.
And Jean will follow suit, clothes off, he won't.
Well, wi- winter use there is is a little bit different. And we always make sure, of course, that there's, there's good snow, snow coverage before he's doing all of his grooming there.
So the old towed alley would be open in the winter.
Winter.
And um, will the new one, do you, have you guys talked to him to, do you think he'll groom that or?
We we haven't. We really want to lay it out on the ground, which we have not done yet, and just see exactly how how windy it becomes, like how wide you can make it. So, yeah.
Right.
So those are the um, the the projects we'd love to move forward on pending your direction. Um, the ones that I put on here are on hold just because it it um, I think is is relevant, relevant for a lot of discussions we've had recently with Colorado Parks and Wildlife. They're a great partner of ours. They've had so many staff changes in the last year or two. Um, that their staff have been been unable to attend a lot of our Golden Horseshoe meetings. Um, we tried to apply for a state trails grant and were not funded mainly because NEPA wasn't completed yet. NEPA just got really uh, waylaid for a variety of reasons. Um, but the projects that we have on hold, because we really want to address CPW concerns. Um, covered up by our 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 image there in the top right is a Rock Island reroute. Um, I don't know if any of you have been out there to see all the moto traffic mess. Yeah, so we're looking for a better alignment um, to get folks out of that uh, motor vehicle mess, quite honestly. And CPW expressed some concerns. And and we just want to understand a little bit better what their concerns are. They have some new staff in our area. We want to get out there once the snow melts and really understand if it's winter range, if it's snow compaction, and just see if we can understand what their concerns are. Um, I know they do have some habitat fragmentation concerns there. Um, and the great bright uh, green blobs that you see on there are the conservation areas that DTJ and Bill Mangle identified from all of their um, analysis. And it really lines up with a lot of what CPW has told us as well. Um, and then the other two, uh, Dry Gulch to ZL and Upper Flume to Chantilly. Again, we want to meet with CPW once um, the snow melts and we can get out and walk these. Um, from Tom Davies, who's no longer um, with CPW. I believe his main concerns in that particular area, we've had a huge um, resurgence in mule deer fawning and moose calving in that particular area just in the last couple of years. Um, and maybe some um, big kitties moving into the area as a result as well. And so I believe their concerns there are on timing of construction. Um, and so what CPW typically recommends is what we do in cucumber gulch, you know, waiting until after July first to really do anything. So this, those two projects are on hold just to see if we can address CPW concerns. See if folks are um, amenable to those. Um, really just some some better alignments, better connections up in in that part of the world. Um, and then since the rose was on hold, we put it on here. Um, uh, BOSAC had a discussion, no consensus on that one. But we did have DTJ run an environmental analysis on it to see if they had environmental concerns. And they did not, which lines up with all of the other conservation data we've been, we've been accumulating.
But that wasn't the issue that was brought up when we were talking about the rose. It was much more about trailhead use and whether we should have a bunch of um, trails perpendicular to each other. So I feel like
Yeah, and Bill Bill Mangle
A piece of the story.
Did also look at it from that perspective and thought that it was very appropriate to what he's calling the front country zone for a management zone. Um, and felt the area could support that. But that's nothing that's decided yet. And certainly something that we can chat with him next, next Monday on as well, when we have him in person.
So I did have, or do you have a?
Ultimately, it's our decision.
Right. Well, I just want the bigger picture. I mean, that's what we've been talking about is having the bigger picture before.
Well, and that, I feel like from the conversation we had last time, it was also a bit of an attraction for other for visitors, for 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 other users, for um, not necessarily that neighborhood. It would be, I'm destination. That's what I'm trying to say, that it's it's a destination attraction. And it, I think there was some concern of having another destination attraction behind a neighborhood like that. Um, yeah, and I I think I've I heard from this group and from BOSAC, some support for something like this in a different area, perhaps in a different area of town. Um, that's what I, that's what I remember. And that's what I've heard from from BOSAC, too, just as.
Well, and I, I mean, I don't know if it's worth considering, but I even think you know, if we strategize where several beginner loops would be appropriate, just to not have every single bike, you you know, rental company saying, oh, and just head up to the Rose Trail, every single one in town. There's only one place to go.
Because we have that with the pump track already in that that type of area, I feel like. That's great. I think the pump track is a great success.
And have you looked at any other areas? For a beginner area and not just a beginner trail?
We, we looked at the two other locations that were recommended or suggested at last year's discussion. One was the Wellington area, which is, as you know, now probably least the location where the um, current Wellington Bike Park is pretty much constrained. Um, and as we potentially build housing in that area, that seems to be less and less of a of a logical place to do it. Um, the other place we looked at was is McCain. Uh, the challenge with McCain is that, number one, there's virtually no soil out there that's to speak of as far as having a nice surface for a trail. And there's no other accessibility beyond that. So once you do, let's say, the beginner loop, then you don't say, then you say, oh, let's go try B and B, or let's go try something the next step up. And that doesn't exist out there, it'd be isolated by itself. So those are the two that we evaluated from a, from a general sense, um, and didn't feel like either one was really rising to the top. And I I I believe the rec, my recollection from the rose suggestion was let's put it on hold, let's do a master plan and then come back and revisit it, which is why it's on this list. It was
On hold, yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't because this is, this is being, this is an agenda driven point to let this thing going. It's more about the idea was to have the consultants take a look at it, look at our master plan and come back with with some more information, which is, I think, a step in that direction right now.
See, but that's where I think there's a missing piece to what they're working on.
You want more specifics?
No, I want more analysis of this front country piece. Like, I see what they're doing, but it's almost like they threw it in there and did it just looking at roads and where other stuff was. It doesn't seem like there was any real on ground analysis for how actually busy that quarter is in the neighborhoods that are downstream of it. That it just doesn't seem like it was thought out. Like, I get what they're doing. I mean, it makes sense, but if we hear anything from, any complaint from the people in the community is the French Gulch area is way too crowded. Why is it so crowded?
And then there are other comments, like we heard during one of the interviews yesterday with And then there are other comments, like we heard during one of the interviews yesterday with a perspective BOSAC member was, you know, we need more trails near Blue Fifty Two. And I I understand, I hear what you're saying. It's just it would be awesome to have, you know, something like this near Blue Fifty Two.
So I don't mind that it's on there. What I don't like is there was not enough analysis of on X amount of the days, only fifty percent of the parking lot was used. So there's plenty of there's, there's plenty of supply. We don't know any of that. All we know is anecdotally how busy it is. How could we as a body, okay, a trail without any in-depth analysis of what the actual impact in that area is right now of
Okay, can the, can the parking handle it too?
And this is different. This is different than someone riding from Wellington to ride the vomit at the B and B trail. These people will have to come in, in a car with a rack, with with, you know, with kids, you know.
So that that's really the piece that I think is sort of missing that I was looking for as we go through some of this analysis. Can we go back to the upper flume to Chantilly real quick? Is that going to make use of the new trail? What what is that new trail called?
That's, so that existing V, that upside down V, it exists already. So that's been constructed. The piece that you're referring to, it's on the ground is already there.
That's the V. That's a great trail.
Yeah. And so from from the top of the V, if you will, the northern end of that all the way to the upper flume is the portion that has been reviewed by the Forest Service because it was on National Forest versus the port portion that was built was on open space.
Awesome. So, because I wanted to make sure we use that because that's a great.
It would tie in right at the top of mics. People have been asking that question, as you can see by the map. So it would be a connection over to my, towards.
And we believe it's just a spring caving fawning concern in that at that area.
Fair enough.
You said no.
And this has nothing to do with you guys again, but you know, I'm kind of a naming, you're naming aficionado. And I I think, I think you know, this is lower Chantilly than this upper Chantilly. And I know the county named Chantilly. But you know, when you cross the road, I think it should have a different name. Chantilly two, no big.
I have, I do, I actually do have a comment on towed alley. I, when we went through that gondola use agreement and Jess and her team did all that analysis. My takeaway from that is that not only was the gondola having an impact, but the greatest impact by far was the recreation trails that go through. And I feel like, A, that was not discussed at all with BOSAC, the team at BOSAC. I don't think that it was really discussed that like, okay, so we're going to shut down a trail, but we're going to redo another trail. But just so you guys know, that is the biggest impact.
Yeah, and BOSAC brought that up. We were not planning on bringing it to them because we have a lot of planning to do.
I would, I would say to your point, Kelly. Yeah, this was not, it was not only agenda to discuss, BOSAC brought it up. It was sort of an ad hoc discussion from there.
But it's green, right? So it's going forward.
So we added it to the map for today's discussion.
Discussion. So the, so the difference here is that it remains, it basically no longer bisects the habitat. It stays on one side as as planned. So that.
That whole top section goes right through the.
That goes away.
This this map is is just showing the existing trail because again, we haven't done any alignment work. We haven't mapped anything out on the ground.
Historic, remember historically.
There is.
Where that fence is now.
Totally.
Used to sort of wander through those trees.
Roughly, it would stay on the, you know, the east side of the wetlands and it won't bisect the habitat, which I think is the point. So BOSAC's had that discussion before. And so as it's shown right there is the current trail in existence. And what happened is the portion that goes to the, you know, goes to the base of peak seven all the way down to where it initially crosses from the boardwalks, it crosses, crosses the wetlands. That would go away and it would just stay on the east side of the wetlands and continue up to the base of peak eight.
Okay, now I understand, but that's very confusing from this map. If you guys could bring a map that's just like the V that's already in place, you know, the existing trails versus new trails, that would make the discussion a lot clearer.
Also, speaking of BOSAC, they did support, I think, I think Anne alluded to this. I just want to make sure everybody knows that they did support all of the trails, aside that conversation with the rose, and there was extra emphasis on towed alley. But otherwise, they, otherwise BOSAC supported.
But extra emphasis on.
Towed alley.
Thank you.
By.
Yeah, that one needs to be done. That's terrible.
But yeah, yeah.
Climb on the other side is awful. Where it's all rooted.
All right, anything else? Get enough?
Yeah, thank you.
Alrighty, Breckenridge Creative Arts Quarterly Update. Hello.
Good afternoon, Mayor. How are you? Good. Thank you for the time today. First, I would just like to take a moment to thank Dick, our representative for all of your service and participation over the last couple of months. And also Kelly, who just finished up a term on our BCA board from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one. So thank you very much, Kelly, and I hope you'll keep BCA in mind as you're starting to deal with more of the toughest challenges we have in childcare and otherwise. So to begin today, I'd like to introduce my colleague Avery Glassman. Avery is our new Director of Programs and Special Projects. She comes to us from Grand Junction in Ohio, and we're very lucky to have her as a part of our team and the community. She has an MBA, dual MBA and MA in art history with a focus on contemporary art and rural climate justice. So she's a perfect fit for us, especially as we're envisioning the future of the organization and the arts district campus in particular. So today in your packet, we just wanted to take a few minutes to add context to what we provided to you and ask it for some feedback and if it is directionally correct and in alignment with with town's goals. You know, we are, oh, thanks. I don't, we won't take the time to go through the the presentation today, but rather just answer questions. We are really turning this organization around and the strategy that we have in this leadership and transition plan summary is a placeholder until we're able to really gather town council, our resident companies in the community at large and more of a holistic long, long-range planning process. And pending no further worldwide disasters, that will begin in twenty twenty-three, early twenty twenty-three. But really, the key transition to this for BCA is a shift from promoting Breckenridge as a destination for the arts to an emphasis on delivering creative experiences for those who are already here and of course, our community in large part. So I'll just jump into, you know, our, our number one long-term question is how to energize the arts district campus. And this year, we're intending on piloting a program, promotional program in the Old Masonic Hall storefront as a welcome center for the arts. And we'll partner with all of the organizations, our resident companies who use our ticketed ticket services to also showcase their work as well. And really in this goal to figure out the future direction of the arts district campus and how we can utilize this beautiful asset that we have in our community that's truly unlike anywhere else in the country. We will be focusing on assessment and collecting data. Asking ourselves and and our community what success looks like, what's working, what's not, et cetera. But I do want to point out page forty-three of the packet, which is an opportunity to explore. I'm not going to bother with the slides up there, but we would really, thank you. We feel, Avery and I feel that we are uniquely positioned to use art as a tool for making explicit our, the values of the community, particularly in environmental art and our goal to be a leader in sustainable practices as well as social justice. And so the the, the quote in there by Nixon, correct? Really is, is kind of begs the question. The environmentalist, yes. And so I'd like to turn it over to Avery to kind of illuminate a little bit about this vision. Why we think it is specifically poignant for our arts district campus in Breckenridge. And let you say a few words.
Yeah. So hi, everyone. It's a pleasure to meet all of you. Some of you I've met already. Just really happy to be here. So what Tamara and I have sort of been talking about and what we'd love feedback from you today is the idea of really focusing our efforts at Breckenridge Creative Arts on arts potential to communicate complicated issues around climate justice. So this quote from environmentalist Rob Nixon is sort of getting at this idea that it can be understandably very difficult for a person to wrap their head around the fact that, say, you know, fracking in the Alberta tar sands affects rising sea levels in Bangladesh. And so we believe that's sort of where art and artists come into play as far as communicating these massively spatially differentiated connections in our climate that are nonetheless very much interconnected. So we also think Breckenridge is uniquely positioned as a mountain town and as a resort town to look at that intersection of art and environment or art and climate justice. There are some centers for art and environment around the country. They're relatively new. None of them are in mountain towns or resort towns. And so really what it gets at is this idea that you know, for the environmentally conscious Breckenridge presents a unique sort of landscape for two reasons. One, because people from all walks of life come here, whether for work or pleasure. And two, because from a environmental science perspective, you know, a lot of the changes that we see happening to our climate that happen in the mountains are indicators of what's going to happen literally downstream. So we have a unique opportunity to to sort of harness our location and harness people who come through our location already to to elevate a lot of what's going on in the contemporary art world already. So, yeah, I'll turn it back to Tamara.
Thanks, Avery. So we'd love, we just wanted to add some context to that as it relates to the overall leadership and transition plan. And the second focus of that plan is really philanthropy. And in the deck, you will see the beginnings of a well-defined strategy for how we will introduce philanthropy to BCA and the support of contributed revenue to our programs. Certainly, the festival, BIFA, is critical to that, as well as our arts education and community outreach programs. The combined entity of Breck Music and BCA will, all of those programs are fully integrated in our plan for two thousand and twenty-two. They are complementary of the other arts nonprofits in the community. And it's the complete elimination of duplicate efforts and programs, specifically in with orchestra, really enabling the NRO to do what they do best in that area. And of course, we've, we've increased. Thank you, Dave, our partnership with the NRO pretty significantly coming into two thousand and twenty-two. So you'll notice what isn't stated in this plan is a retirement of the Breck Music brand. However, our goal in this first year of launching a philanthropic program for the organization is to retain the majority of Breck Music donors. So there is a pretty significant chamber music and contemporary series in BIFA called The Revolution Music Theory Series, and it really focuses on living composers and music that is connected to other disciplines. So film, dance, et cetera. So I think those are, you know, the, some context that we wanted to add, and we'd just like to open the floor to specifically the leadership and transition plan and just get some feedback on whether it feels directionally correct and aligned with the goal of the community.
Dick, do you want to start?
Yeah, I'll start. Yeah, well said, Tamara. Appreciate it. I obviously, I was a part of this. We gave, came. You know, a lot of this was refined in the retreat, so I'm very supportive. I mean, I think the piece that Tamara's not saying, it 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 feels far more collaborative with with the other organizations of town and the other efforts in town. And I think the the organization is going to a place where they can really try to to enhance and 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 help art in so many of the other areas of of work that we're trying to do and our other assets around our town. So but yeah, I'm 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 extremely supportive of where it's headed.
Did you?
And it's, I'm sorry, but it's also very strategic. I mean, this is like, you know, go slow to go fast kind of thing. However, the programming is coming out out of a fire hose for the summer, right? Which is great. I mean, I think there is, I think we're all desperate for some of that after, after the last couple of years.
Yeah, I think it's, it it sounds, it sounds phenomenal. Did, did I hear you say that Breck Music is retired?
The, the brand of Breck Music will be retired and all programs will be marketed and publicized under Breck Create and Breckenridge Creative Arts.
Not, not the program.
The program, so the Breckenridge Music Festival and BIFA will be combined and integrated into one ten-day footprint. So there'll be a significant series with a pedagogical partnership with the NRO extending their residency through BIFA to kind of bring together the best of both festivals, moving forward into something that's really dynamic, we hope.
Yeah, cool. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say as well that I feel like Tamara has really, you know, she's a community member and she's a longtime community member who really it feels like the ideas that she's bringing are so organic to our community. And so I think you know, I really can feel like we can trust the decisions that she's making. You know, it's art, so it's certainly beyond this group's. But so, but I do feel like we can really trust the decisions that she's making for her group. And I, I want to give her some space to really get going and, you know, get her, stretch her legs or wings or whatever she chooses to use. But but I think we can trust the decisions that she's going to make and that she's going to work with. You know, all of our other terrific nonprofits.
Yeah, I think this is really reflective of our community. I like the new direction. And welcome, Avery. Hey, so on this air stage, is it going to be kind of like we did last year? Which is a little bit more kind of a pop-up, a little bit more surprise?
We, yes, so we are still assessing how we'll move forward with the block party program with the air stage, like the similar theme of all of these conversations is staffing. And we're currently, you know, we have been moving a little bit in a forward direction, but we are at about sixty to sixty-five percent of our pre-pandemic combined entity staffing. So we have to, so we're taking a close look with the priority being BIFA Festival, animating the arts district campus. So you'll see the air stage primarily on the arts district campus for certain dates sprinkled throughout the the summer season as a part mainly of our second Saturday programs where we welcome visitors and community members to explore the arts district campus from the family lens. So if we are able to staff it, we will unfold the block party program. And we're working towards those plans and goals.
Yeah, I think this is a excellent direction. I know it's been a tremendous amount of work through the just stabilization of the organization, the transition, and it'll be interesting to see what comes out of the strategic plan eventually. But I love this emphasis on collaboration and partners and also just animating the arts district, the Old Masonic Hall is kind of a information center for all the arts, BCA and resident organizations right on Main Street. I think that's great. So thank you.
Thanks.
Anything, Dan?
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Oh, I think also, just because I know the question was asked about the, with, with Avery, the momentum toward environment and a focus there. I, I think that's fabulous. I think it completely aligns with a lot of what we're trying to do up here. So I think that's, that's great.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's the part of this I'm most excited about. Yeah, great job. I'm a little worried about having town party at the end of July or the middle of July.
Oh, is it a June? Do you, so?
My 16th in here.
Oh, I meant June. My, I missed a letter, a typo. No, second Thursday, second Thursday of, or third Thursday of, the traditional June date and Thursday at the Riverwalk Center and returning to.
You were really just going out there.
I wanted to see if you read the packet.
She meant July 4th.
Can you talk a little bit about Trail Mix now? Would that be all right since Tamara's here?
Sure.
So, thanks. Um, so Trail Mix came up at Bosak and, because, and, and staff presented some information about what, what art might be on the trails and some locations. I know I've, since I've talked to Kelly and I know that some of, there's been some confusion as far as what types of materials and things like that. Um, there were some concerns, and I know I, I share some of these too, about the effects of programming on our trails. And I think some of those concerns were, A, if some of the materials can get mixed into, get mixed into the, to the forest floor, which it sounds like the only one that could is, and this is really getting into the weeds, but the painted rock. So I think perhaps there, there could be concern there and some mixed messaging with us taking down the fairy forest. And then yet there's, you know, so, so I, but I think that was understood or that was heard. But also the location of it, and this, this has nothing to do with content. I hope, I hope you hear me when I say this. I am not looking to censor or do anything like that. It's not content. It's simply location. And again, those destination attractions and how they're treated in our open space when, when town is so busy because of BIFA, which is what we want, and there are a few locations for our locals to go and recreate and not see 100 people. So I, I just think that we need to be sensitive to that and thoughtful where we locate some of these attractions as far as, you know, all of the other congestion concerns that we had for with the troll, like whether it's located to near a neighborhood or whether there's sufficient parking or if there's, you know, and this would be on you guys, you know, if there's enough messaging so that people stay on the trail so that they don't wander out and braid the trail and that sort of thing. So I, I just think that there are lots of conversations, you know, and, and concerns around that as it, as it pertains to open space for this group to think about. And I also would just say, I know I'm off in a month. But perhaps the conversation could continue, and my request would be that the conversation continues and there's a check-in before we get too far down the road with Trail Mix. Again, not because of the content, but just because of whether this is a program that is appropriate each year regarding overcrowding and things like that. And it could, it could be something that's, that's great. It's just, I think with, with the troll, we want to learn from, from what happened there and make sure that this is, you know, it's in the right, just like what the events committee says, like it's the right thing, right location, right time, that sort of thing. Is that, am I making sense to everybody?
I have, I have no idea when anything is.
So.
No, I appreciate it. I, you know, because I've kind of jumped in and Scott, I've talked to Scott and Kelly and, and Aaron and Tamara. And I think, I think that's exactly what's happened, Aaron. I think they're, the conversations have, have continued and shifted a bit, and they're not refined enough to bring back here in details why you haven't seen it yet, Eric. I, I think, I, I think we're heading in the right direction. I, you know, I think that was a meaningful meeting. I, I think maybe in the future Tamara could benefit from being the one presenting at Bosak if we're going to do this kind of event, which I hope we will. So, yeah, I think we're good. I think we're making progress. So I, I think exactly what you're asking and saying is, is happening. It, it hasn't refined enough to bring back in detail, but I think, I think we're making progress.
And honest, I mean, Tamara, you've done such a great job in the, you know, like listening and, you know, with the air stage and everything. I mean, I feel like we mentioned values and you, you know, bring on Avery to say, hey, this is what we're going to do with your values. So it's, it's awesome. Is there going to be an opportunity for this group to talk about it?
Well, we'll make sure there is.
Yeah, I think there needs to be. I mean.
I mean, if we learned nothing today, we went, it's no surprises.
Okay. No surprise.
I have a note here, and so we just need to understand what the options are for the different types of event that could be. And then we need to see what that would look like and what potential locations would have the least impact. And I think once we work through that stuff, we can share it around and make sure we get buy-off and that everybody's up to speed and understands.
And it, you know, being on the board, there's some cool artists, some cool ideas. And so I'm very excited.
That's what's been our biggest problem in the past, right? We just, we don't ever want to be surprised by what we're going to see out there because it's our community. And while we're not trying to censor, we're still, we're the ones that are getting the, we, meaning you, are getting the phone calls.
Yep.
If people go, what the heck did you just do?
And it's funny because it's like success is a double-edged sword. Like I am not worried about you, you know, putting on something great. I am worried about you putting on something great. So it's, yeah, that's my, that's my concern. But anyway, thank you so much. I know that this is a little, you know, it's, it's, it's extra work and.
Oh, no. I mean, we got great feedback already, and that was our intention to be proactive, to make sure that, you know, we are in alignment with the community and minimizing impact and learning lessons from the troll. And so this was our first step, and we got some great feedback from Scott and Bosak, and we'll continue to work on it and, you know, are excited to share and use VMS boards, maybe.
That's art.
Yeah, I will.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tamara, I do want to publicly thank you for your hard work. I mean, you have hit the ground running and you've made a ton of progress. It's been great.
Thank you. Thanks, Dick.
There's a love fest here, isn't it?
I think we can do this last one really quick because while Tamara's here and Julia's walking up there, but you guys have approved the Logan Thompson Memorial, and it was going to go next between the skate park and the pitch field in that one corner, but the family really was not happy with that location. And so they'd like to relocate it to. It's in your packet. You see the star sits there kind of behind the rec center in that area, just to the south or west of the Welcome to Breckenridge sign, et cetera. So I think staff's good with it, right? We don't have any issues.
It doesn't flood right there, does it?
It's a really tall statue.
It turns into surfing. Yeah, that's true. Okay.
Yeah, that's a higher, that's a higher, that's a higher spot right there.
Where was it before?
It wasn't. It was going to be.
Well, yeah, but where was it going?
It was going to be right.
Over there. Oh, yeah. This is a better, I think this is a better location because it's further away from the rec center. I mean, not rec center, the rec. Yeah, I like this a lot, a lot more.
I think it's a good location. We have checked the floodplain issue, so.
I'm okay with it. I think it's a great location. It's a great piece, and I think it speaks to a large contingent in our community. So I, I'm super supportive.
Yeah, good. We'll go ahead and with the movement on it. Thanks.
Be good.
Thank you.
Your vision.
Perfect.
The next one could be a longer discussion. Are you going to need a minute?
We take five.
I need a couple of minutes.
All right. Julia.
Thank you, Mayor Town Council. Well, this is the comprehensive small cell approach with Newcom and their license agreement that we have been working on for a couple of years now. Um, so a few years ago, the Federal Communication Commission, FCC, adopted regulations that pertain to small cells in the right of way throughout the country. So what it essentially does is makes 5G more accessible to the, the cellular providers nationwide. So it removes a lot of things that local government would otherwise be able to control. What local government is able to control is a lot of designs, some design standards. So it also regulates that the entitlement, so when an application comes in, in the right of way, the staff has to process that within 90 days. Otherwise, it's approved. So that, that is a key piece of that. And so when this, the FCC regulations took place, what staff did was come forward to the town council, put in place some small cell design guidelines, which was reviewed and adopted by the council in 2019. Then we also put in place policy 50 under development code, which regulates some design standards too, so that we were in conformance with everything as well. So with those design guidelines that apply to the rights of way, this is, it is a staff level review process when they come in through the right of way because of that 90-day shot clock. For example, if they had to go through planning commission and through the town council process, there's a high likelihood that it wouldn't go through in that 90-day process. So timeframe. So that's why we put that staff level review in place. So providers come through and process a master license agreement with the town. That also came to the town council within the last two years when Tim Berry was here, so that the town council could see it, be comfortable with the fact that we would be entering into this master license agreement with providers for the ability for them to go into the right of way. So that is the underlying process. Well, 5G requires a lot of poles. So you have a Mac, you have macro sites, so those, those big ones up on the hill above Western Sky, for example, and that's macro site. We've got a few macro sites in town as well. What the 5G pole is intended to do is offload some of that data capacity that those macro sites ultimately can't handle. The macro sites are really good at, at handling the voice, but if it gets over, if the system gets overloaded with the capacity, then the 5G can handle at the pedestrian. gets overloaded with the capacity, then the 5G can handle at the pedestrian level, offload that data, so all your streaming and all your apps and things like that. So, that's sort of how that works. The 5G spectrum is such that it doesn't go a far distance. So, you have poles at certain, certain distances. So, that is sort of the, just a very basic gist of how that works. And knowing that that was coming down the line a few years ago, we said, how can we be proactive in this? We're worried about how many poles might be coming into the town or worried about pole proliferation, so especially in the historic district. So, how can we take a comprehensive approach to this? And that's when we came up with this approach of, let's be proactive, let's go out for an RFI, let's get some information from companies and find out what the best solution could be. We ultimately went to selected American Tower Corporation and Newcom. They ended up pairing up and working together. Creation ended up not going forward in the small cell industry as of last year, but we did make a decision to go for Newcom. So, one of the ideas behind the reducing the pole proliferation is to come up with a pole that has, was co-locatable. So, two providers per pole instead of having, let's say, there's four primary providers, instead of having four poles per block, having two poles, for example, and reducing that as much as we could downtown. Early on, we talked about concepts of maybe they should be in the alley, but because they don't have a large span for signal, those poles would have to be really tall, they'd have to overreach the building to get to the pedestrians on Main Street. So, then we kind of looked at Main Street. So, where on Main Street would be the best way to go in the historic district? And decided on the intersections would be best, and that's where the holes were anyways in the data capacity for the providers. The intersections were great too, because that's where your traffic signals are, and the traffic signals are tall. So, we already have tall traffic signals there, so we'd be replacing existing poles, so we don't add to the amount of poles we have in, on Main Street. We'd be pulling some of our poles off that have streetlights, putting these in place, and then on the intersections. And that gives you a little bit more room for the pedestrians when they're on, at the intersections because of the bulbouts, and then puts them near the, in this case, two of these intersections have traffic signals. So, it's already tall right there. So, we are at French, Lincoln, and Adams. So, there'd be two poles per intersection. So, that was sort of the thought process behind that, just to kind of rehash that. And then, the benefit of going with Newcom was that, that co-location of getting Newcom to kind of work with those providers, have the town buy-in to work with those providers to get them to co-locate on those poles, because you're not really gonna, in what I've gathered from other areas, the provider and their providers, they're not going to necessarily voluntarily co-locate with each other. So, that's.
Oh, I'm sorry, can we mandate that?
You cannot mandate that, is my understanding from the FCC. Newcom was also putting all the infrastructure, including, you know, running fiber to these poles, and our hope and assumption is that they could run town fiber, which we have plenty of fiber to do that. And then, those, that, that infrastructure would already be in, those providers could essentially come in, work with Newcom, come in and plug into those poles. So, that's, that's the idea behind it. The agreement with Newcom is for 10 years that we have drafted here. The last time we were before you, we had a pole that was lower than you see today in your packet, and it was just under 20 feet. The providers weren't thrilled with that pole, but also the manufacturer ended up not manufacturing that anymore. So, that pole is gone, and we're at this 25-foot pole, so it is taller, and you'll find that in your packet. And I can actually scroll to it. So, here's the locations, two per block. And here's the pole. So, with that, the design itself. Oh, there's also some locations, and I'm sorry, this looks like not the most recent version you have in your packet, but there are seven locations that are shown in your packet that are in this, outside of the conservation district, that are a little bit of a different design. So, here's the one in the historic district. Here is where the electric meter is shown for Excel with like every pole to have its own meter. So, 25 feet in the historic district, and as we go outside the historic district, it goes up to 30. These are both below the design standard regulations that we have for height right now, which is 30 in the historic district and 40 outside of the district. And at the time, in 2019, that's what we believed to be the lowest the providers would find feasible, but it has gone, I mean, time goes on and advancements are made, and we believe, and we believe that they're acceptable to be at this height now. So, I do believe that these are realistic heights. And the, there's obviously multiple options, but. So, you can, you can, so we did put that, Scott Jackman thankfully, put that pole up on the existing streetlight here on Ski Hill and Main, so you can see the height and the diameter obviously increases well by quite a bit to 24 inches. So, it is a lot more mass. You do have the, the intersection poles behind here, and then you would have that in the same situation on French, but here on Adams, or sorry, Ari and Watson. Okay, sorry.
We're hanging a banner in between.
I was thinking the same thing.
I'm not sure as far as interference, but.
I mean, like the fabric banner we currently hang.
Yeah, but move it.
That gets stiff wind.
Kind of look like actually driving through Frisco, they have their banner poles like in the highway, kind of looks like that. Yeah.
Just move the location in it.
I agree.
At least tie these things.
So, here's like outside of the district at 30 feet. So, the, the increased height outside of the district allows that signal to go further, and that's the benefit of not having that lower. So, anyway, that is sort of those there. Yes.
Yeah, that one in front of Woodwinds, which I believe is a historic property. Yeah. Does, can that be moved just in front of the parking lot instead, so that it's not right in front of one of our historic properties?
I'm not sure that that's where it would be going. So. But yeah, we could try to move that to the other side. I guess it'd be right here.
To the other side of the intersection, you're saying north, south move?
A north, south move just in front of that parking lot? It would, so it'd be a little more further south. But you guys can figure that out. I've just wondered, so that it doesn't, because we already have a historic district issue with some of our properties no longer meeting all the millions of criteria, and it would just be a shame if that was one of the reasons that we no longer met that criteria.
And we do not want them in front of historic properties, so.
Are you ready for questions? Or do you?
I believe I am ready for questions, so go ahead.
Sure.
Yep. Ready to tell everybody.
I mean, is there any questions to be asked? We have to do this, right?
I still have a lot of questions.
To do it, because, and I should clarify that, you don't have to do it. This is kind of our proactive approach with Newcom.
Getting ahead of the game.
But you could, the providers can still go on their own. They don't have to go with Newcom. Our hope is that they will see it as a benefit to go with Newcom, because they would have the entitlements, they would have the infrastructure in place to just kind of go in and be ready to go. And Newcom has had conversations with providers, so maybe they can weigh in here, but that is, that is our hope, but to, to tell you that we would never see another pole that comes in independent of, like, let's say AT&amp;T decides to go in with a pole on their own elsewhere, they could.
It is, that's annoying. That line, it could, I hear we can't mandate that they co-locate. Is there anything short of mandating that we can strongly encourage them to co-locate?
Yeah, I strongly just, it's strongly encouraging them every time I talk to them.
But I mean, anything in the ordinance that maybe makes it a little more challenging if they don't, or, you know, I hate to take the stick approach, I'd rather the carrot approach, but is there, is there anything we can do? Yeah, obviously, we can't mandate, but something short of that that might motivate them to co-locate? It's just a question. I mean, you may or may not have an answer, but it's something for us to think about, I think.
This approach encourages them to co-locate, because it's, it's ready to go for them. They don't have to spend their time on, on anything.
But we're told that Verizon and AT&amp;T can't, right? But isn't that why we're doing them on either side of Main Street? So, they can go in one and the other can go in the other? So, they, we already have poles that will accommodate that, right? But there, we know there's gonna be multiple carriers, so the co-location issue is going to come up. Next question, have we looked at, say, I don't even want to say this, because I have historic building there, but on Ridge Street, and maybe the alley behind the buildings on Main Street, just to not have it on our historic Main Street, have them? You know, they may have to be the 30-foot poles, but I just think they would fit better. And I'd love to say, you know, French in the alley, or, you know, but, I mean, have we, do we, do we really feel like it's gotta be Main Street? Or could, could we go a block, shift it a block, utilize, because we know we're gonna redo the alley behind Main Street, you know, the Riverwalk? Call it an alley, because it's kind of what it's being used as now, but, you know, just to get them off our historic Main Street. So, again, I'm not necessarily.
It's a larger question I'd like to ask, just about the general technology of this. These things are sort of line of sight, right? We're just assuming that we put them on Main Street because there's just more people walking on Main Street, but we also have a lot of people who walk on French that walk in the alley. Are those people just not gonna get signaled? Or is one day they're gonna be a pole on every single block in every city in this country?
One of you come up here?
I'm Karen Dyak, the owner of Newcom. So, I don't, we don't foresee poles on every block now. I think that what we're seeing, it is definitely a line of sight functionality, and Julia did a great job of describing really that 5G functionally, because it is operating at a higher frequency, it transmits shorter distance, that means you have to be closer to the user, and the higher the frequency gets, it's also much more subject to any obstruction that it has to go through. That includes trees, I mean, leaves on trees, things like that. So, being further away and being less direct to a customer is, or a user, I should say, is, is where you start to see problems. The, as far as your other question, which I just completely lost, the app, no, not the alley.
It's really more about this, just, I don't, I mean, it seems like these are strictly line of sight.
Yes.
We're really not putting that many in.
Will other users not have service? That's what I was trying to get to, I apologize. So, there is, there is 4G, certainly very solid 4G service, right? And that is coming from those macros that Julie was talking about. And so, this is really a capacity play, as the carriers would call it. It is not about coverage in the, in the downtown area. Certainly, we know there are some issues over in the Wellington area, and that's the reason for those poles is really more coverage based, is those, that area is shadowed from the mountain site that's, that's covering it as best it can. So, in terms of the downtown area, it really is a capacity thing where users just become non-functional, because there are so many, there's so much capacity trying to pull from the network, so it just can't, it basically locks up.
So, 5G is not going to be the only thing one day? Because they got rid of 3G, right?
Largely, yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, eventually, will 4G go away, and then 6G will go back to the macro?
If I had that answer, I would be a very wealthy woman. I do, and I joke, but realistically, 4G is not foreseen to be going away at this stage of the game. That's a really difficult thing to say 20 years from now. You know, we've seen really generational changes in technology on the wireless side about every 10 years.
So, 5G is really not better?
5G is faster and higher capacity.
But it's really not solving, it's just filling holes, it seems like.
It depends on what you're, what you're trying to solve. Are you trying to solve a coverage problem? Are you trying to solve a capacity problem where users, you know, good or bad, that's really a personal thing? Do you think it's better that people are streaming videos, or they're wanting to stand in live stream on Main Street and show their friends back home, how many people are here? I mean.
Rather than just use your phone.
No, I totally hear you, and that's why I say, it's, it's really that balance. And like Julie said, the FCC, whether you like it or not, whether we like it or not, decided to make this mandate that said, everybody needs access, and this, in a global sense, they viewed as a, as a good thing, I guess.
So, will this even solve dropped calls?
In the Main Street area?
My house.
So, I think the biggest, well, one of the things that it does do is it pulls, it allows carriers to reallocate their, their spectrum, I guess you'd say, or their, their resources, so that, because a lot of what happens, that is not a coverage problem. Again, I'm talking in the downtown area, so not, not addressing over along Wellington, and that, that's, those poles, absolutely, those would have, that's part of the reason that they're taller too, is they would have 4G and 5G in them both. Because right now, voice, speaking to calls, voice is running on the 4G network.
So, how, how much distance from those poles going up Wellington? What's the spectrum on those ones? How?
Well, I will tell you, Verizon has said, specifically focusing on Verizon for a moment, when you see nine and 13 on, on the screen, those are the locations Verizon says would fix their issues in those areas. And I, there's been some most definite dialogue about that.
That would cover that whole, that whole region, those two poles.
It would fill the holes that they have.
And maybe, Karen, that would be helpful. I think part of this approach is us being proactive, so the carriers don't come in and build their poles.
Oh, certainly.
Want to. Can you talk a little bit about your conversations with carriers? And do you feel confident you'll be able to secure a contract with them? I mean, I'm somewhat familiar with these, and typically, it's rare that these poles are built on spec. Usually, a carrier comes in and they are designing the pole to their exact need. So, how involved have carriers been in this process?
We have had conversations with Verizon, AT&amp;T, and T-Mobile. The most conversation with Verizon, I would say, AT&amp;T second and T-Mobile. All three are very interested in participating in the poles downtown, specifically, as well as different locations here along Wellington. Verizon is specifically has said they are good with, they, they would like, they would join, they're interested in pursuing those locations, where we sit, you know, the ones that Julia showed on Main Street, and also these, these two in particular as an initial deployment. Where we stand right now is, we don't have a contract. Where we stand right now is we don't have a contract with the town and so. We're sort of stuck with them and that's AT&amp;T and T-Mobile have pretty much said. On board with the concept, come back to us when you have a contract. So we're kind of in a chicken egg situation, I guess I would call it, in that we need. Something official, I guess you'd say from the town, which is again, the contract we've negotiated, but in order to get them. To ink something, we don't, we don't really have the rights to do that right now, right? I mean, we can have conversations and we have had those conversations. Definitely, they're definitely interested and AT&amp;T and Verizon are delighted with the idea that they would not share a pole. And again, that was part of the idea with doing pairs is the visual balance of having one on each side. I think that was. Part of Julia's idea as far as the, and also allows for two carriers on each pole.
Why doesn't, why don't they, what's the hindrance of not sharing a pole?
It's the frequencies that Verizon, Verizon and AT&amp;T in particular on five G are in the same frequency spectrum. They're in the same range and so they will fundamentally interfere, but the separation of across the street is enough to make them both work fine.
So one of, one of the places that. One of the few places that I have a real problem is where we have the poles on Main Street, not the location. But, so we're talking about a twenty-five foot pole on Main Street. If we went to a thirty-five foot pole, could we use Dick's idea of putting him in the alley and, and go into French? Would that solve our problem and take him off our historic Main Street? Just a question.
There's concern about it being able to conversations that we've had with carriers. Again, there, those become shadowed by the structures that are on Main Street. Between Main Street and the alley, you see what I mean? Or between Main Street and French, either one, where they, the signal just doesn't get over and. Down into the sidewalk area, wherever where the, where the, the people really are. Is that, am I making sense how I'm explaining that or?
So I'm just looking for an option other than me.
I understand and we've, we've had those conversations certainly over time.
So if shadowing is an issue, does that mean it doesn't help people when they're inside buildings?
Um, five G is less effective inside than outside. I don't know how many of you are using five G phones and well, and right now. We're in semi-five G, which is another whole conversation we don't need to get into right here, but there's, and I say that. Somewhat tongue in cheek, but the carriers are using. A step toward, toward full five G is what I guess I would say. They don't have. All of their sites deployed yet, you know, they're having conversations like this in a lot of different places to try and get to that point.
So, second question, in your conversations with, um, the carriers. Do, do, how do you, do you think that they will, in this, you might have answered this and this might not be worded correctly, but I'll throw it out anyway. The four G, will they put the, will they want to utilize your poles to enhance the four G as well as have. Potential with, to, to, um, to roll out five G as well? Will they do both with any of them?
We've had conversations about that with the carriers, yes. There is, you know, any, as time goes along, the more they're heavier. They're heavy on five G versus four G, I just as more users transition, but. It's difficult to have, to space wise, to stay at twenty-five feet. And accommodate both four G and five G. Four G equipment is bulkier, takes up more space in a pole. That's going, that's. Kind of where we've landed is that's going to be challenging. That's maybe where rooftops come into play or some other locations may. Be needed from a four G perspective, but five G specifically, it really.
So in our existing situation without full five G, this may or may not help us if they're not putting four G enhancements out. Is that accurate?
There are so many users on five G now. I mean, what, what is, whether it's interim five G or long-term five G. And now I'm starting to make up my own terms, which isn't right, but, um. They, that, that functionality is the same, it's in the same percentage range on the, on the poles.
I want to add to that. You know, the industry, the transportation industry is also projecting the autonomous vehicles will. Probably run off of five G. Very fluid in this, in this whole converse, you know, in this whole industry, so. I mean, that's the other piece of this is you kind of go back and. Talk to someone else and something else has changed and something else has, has, you know, made an advancement and. Or backtracked and, and so it's a little, it's always, one thing I've learned in this is, is it's always a little fluid. But, so I'm a little, you know, I'll, I'll say that, but I'm always a little hesitant, but that is kind of what. What's being said right now is that the autonomous vehicles will be. Five G too, so having them. Street side is probably.
Keeping that in mind, this may not be anything Karen wants to hear, but. Should we stall and should we wait until the technology catches up to allow us to, uh, you know. To, to have more options in where we locate and size of pole and all of that?
We can definitely do that. It won't necessarily prevent other providers coming in. We have processed two AT&amp;T small cells in the right of way poles. In town limits. I know the county has processed a few that, and none of them have been built.
All AT&amp;T or are there other carriers?
But none of them have been constructed.
Karen, you're dying to say so.
Um, I believe, I, I truly do believe that carriers are waiting to see where this goes with us because why, as Julia said earlier. They have no reason to go build this on their own if we built them what they really want to see.
And I'd like the concept of working with you. I just wish the technology was a little further along.
Right, and the risk is, like Julia said, if you wait. Much longer, you're going to have carriers in definite, and I, I mean, conversations we've had with Verizon that we get asked that regularly. So where is this? What are we, what are we looking at as far as? Is this going to happen? When is it going to happen? So that.
Shifting gears a little because the last time we had this discussion and it was a while ago. But we talked a lot about prioritizing locating these on buildings and not, not having poles. Where are we on that? I mean, can we? Encourage, strongly encourage. But you know, how, how, I mean, I, I'm assuming we all still would prefer to see these on buildings over poles. Maybe we've got, this is a historic town and this is a big deal for us.
Completely agree.
We have issued one permit that hasn't, of course, been built on the Welcome Center for an AT&amp;T small cell. Um, on the roof. But again, that hasn't been.
More, more about us locating this program on buildings.
Yeah.
And talking with private owners about locating on their buildings.
Yeah, because we can open doors for you. I mean, the town, the community networks quite well. And most of these buildings, I would say, are owned by. Local people or people that used to be local and are in warmer places now. Weather's gone back, so.
Yeah. And the memo, I, yeah, how is?
Is that?
What, but how is that, I guess? How does that strategy play into the strategy?
We have asked that that be a priority. And. I guess, if you want to. Newcom really felt like it really needed to be in the street. They would try to locate anything on a building if they could. Um, if it would work, however, they had some concerns with how it would. The signal would go out if it was. Located on top of a building. Or on a rooftop. Or if multiple carriers could be on the same one.
Some of the buildings, like the Welcome Center, we've been up there. It, it just physically really doesn't accommodate more than one carrier. Because, uh, and unfortunately AT&amp;T has a permit to be able to go locate there, which means. Um, the only, there's a wifi antenna, I believe that's up there now and then there's really, I guess. It's becomes partially physical logistics. Structural issues, private landlords is another whole, you know, from the beginning, this project has been based on town-owned assets. Not privately, not private owners and that's just, and that's another whole. Category to get into, um, co-location like that on behalf of the town on a private property, it feels. Like that's not going well, but I could be wrong. Physical, in terms of physical obstructions and things like that, as we've talked, high-powered sites can go on rooftops. Lower powered ones that again allow that density and things like Julia's talking, you know. If it, you know, we do look at autonomous vehicles, it, it has to be a smaller site with a lower power that is closer together, so you have. Reduce the latency and, you know, time of communication from the site or the obstacle, up, not obstacle, object, um, back to the site. Again, could that possibly be a, a piece of the puzzle? Sure. Sure. And we have looked at those, I think, like I said, that the Welcome Center is the only one really that's on Main Street that. Don't, that the town owns and it, and the rooftop just really is a problem, not to mention. Conduit locations and details like that getting inside the building because it has to connect outside.
I guess rather than rooftop, can you mount these on the side of a building?
Potentially. I'm, I'm, I'm surprised, I'll just say, I'll, I would be surprised that visually that that would be appealing, but.
I think it's better than a pole.
I mean, one thought was. You know, if we, if we mounted it to a building and it needed to be sort of overhanging the sidewalk. You know, could it sort of project over the sidewalk from a building like a sign, like our projecting signs? It could be.
We're only talking six locations, right?
Right, I mean.
I, I think Dick might be more optimistic as far as getting a private buy-in. For, you know, private property to allow us to do this. I don't know what, I mean, have, have you seen that other places? You know, the, like, we just can't get people to shovel the sidewalk, let alone to put a, put a goalpost on their building.
Oh, there's money.
That's a lot different.
Yeah, no, but I'm just saying, it's.
This doesn't require you to have help out there doing anything.
Well, this, this, again, this program has been based from the beginning of the time of the RFI came out. On town assets and that's obviously part of the structure, you know, carriers, you know, we unfortunately go back to. If, if landlord, you know, somebody who owns a building sees this as a great opportunity to make some good money, that's great. Except that the carrier can still go to the right of way and those fees are capped. And it's a much, much less expensive option for them and the likelihood that they would choose a route.
Less timely and.
Structural concerns, visuals on the outside, you know, it's not just an antenna out there, there's cables that have to go somewhere, there's power that has to come from somewhere. There are a lot of things behind that, that right now are concealed in the pole and I, and I'm not trying to. Downplay the option, you know, we have, we have looked, believe me, we have looked at rooftops, that's. Um, as a part of the, as a part of, maybe that becomes part of the picture. I think it's, it's just. I can't sit here and say that only rooftops is, is going to work. It, I, that's not the feedback we're getting from carriers. I know that's not the answer people want to hear necessarily, and, you know, I want to be straight with what we're hearing.
Especially because I, I still, this, I hate this whole thing. Because the FCC has mandated something without thinking about. A town like ours and is mandating us to do something that's not complete. And if we did that, we'd get in trouble for doing something like that, so I, I find this to be just atrocious. That this is how the federal government's gonna make us screw up our historic district. With something we wouldn't allow anybody else to do and might not even work. You might not even need it. Maybe they'll put their stuff in, maybe they won't. The, the carriers have not been great, honestly, putting stuff into Breckenridge. You know, we have had multiple conversations. I mean, Julia's been on the front of this. They have promised to upgrade and do stuff. They very rarely come through with it, so this whole thing. I, I find to be. Super annoying and I'd rather use other words, but I won't.
The, I will say in July, we, part of the contract does say. If carriers don't sign on, we don't build them. We're not gonna go put poles out there and hope that somebody comes. That's not the plan.
Okay, I didn't understand that part.
As that's in the contract, there's, there was a year. From the time that, you know, we have a couple of things that, you know, need to be, you know, design of the pole and the, and a fiber agreement, but. Uh, we have a year to have carriers onboard and that, and again, nothing gets built until a carrier's on.
And they have to, so what, what does onboard mean, considering?
They've executed agreement with us.
Because if, because Julia, you just said that there were a couple of inquiries or something with AT&amp;T. Oh, they pulled permits, but that's not considered onboard. They have to.
They did that independent of us and, and.
Sign on with you.
Again, part of that, we believe. Um, is, is probably at least in part because of the timeframe and they need, they know they need to move, but they have not built them yet.
And luckily not in the historic district. The other piece I wanna, um, I didn't address yet is. Either way, I'm gonna come back to you all with revised design standards, revised those two thousand nineteen design standards. If you, either way, the, what we have, the pole design and the heights. That are, the providers are okay with now are better than what we have and need to go into our standards. And so, um, there's other regulations that are now. More palatable to the providers also. So we'll be adding those in also and I'll be taking that back to you. So that even if we, if they did, if the provider did go somewhere else that Newcom wasn't locating. Or we didn't go forward with Newcom, for example, we're still gonna get these lower heights, we're gonna get. Something that's more, um, in sync with our, a design that's more in sync with our historic districts and. Um, our outside of our historic district as well, so. We're gonna do that regardless because they could locate elsewhere, they could go up ski hill or they could, you know. Go, go somewhere else that we're not thinking of.
And could they? Could they potentially put as many poles as they wanted down Main Street? Like say AT&amp;T came in and said, we actually don't need three, we need twelve.
Um, right now, yes, but that will be something that I also take forward is a, a distant, a spacing requirement.
As part of your design standard.
And then another question, say you, say we go through with this, you ain't could deal with AT&amp;T. Would you put poles down both sides of the street then, just in the hopes that the other side? Or would you just do the?
I will, that would be our preference just because it would, from a construction perspective, that's gonna make the more sense and also, like I said, part of this. Conceptually was just having them parallel is a better thing than just having one. It makes it seem more planned, right?
Well, and I, I do like the banner thing. I mean, it really.
Right, that would allow you to do that and, and.
There's down Main Street, would sort of, would sort of hide them a little bit at least. People wondered why we had so many banners.
To test those poles, those banners are, they'd have to be, or a different banner. Because those have tremendous torque.
That's okay if they tear the poles down then, sorry.
That sounds like a hazard. We don't want to do that.
Speaking of having the poles on either side of the street. We're not, I, I couldn't see it in the packet, but we're not planning on doing that up Wellington, are we? Okay.
No, greater height allows for more carriers to be in there and the, and there's a likelihood they would probably do more of a leapfrog as opposed to. Um, you know, like I was saying, the number, what were numbered nine and thirteen are the Verizons of particular interest initially. That, you know, AT&amp;T maybe goes at the next position down.
Okay, great. And if the other side of that road can't.
Right, yeah, that's not a, not a good place for it.
And the, the map of all the locations are, is actually page. Sixty, page sixty-nine in your packet.
That's six, the pole location.
Yeah, and it, it's seven, it's seven through thirteen on there. This is a.
Yeah.
Older map, so sorry about that for people in the audience, but, um, and, and some of those are actually in the county, probably, it looks like. And then quite honestly, I do know that there's two on that, in the county along that road as well, that have been issued, so.
What, what is the state historian? Historian say about this?
It's really interesting. Yeah, so, um. It's a struggle for all the historic districts and we're all talking about it and trying to. Figure out a solution. They're aware of what we're doing. That's all I can really say. There's no one else doing this type of approach. There, it's more reactionary at this point. The, the shipo did just a few months ago have. A session, training session on it, just to let people know what, what small cells were, you know, but it's more generic. So, you know, what your rights are and a lot of the historic districts are smaller and maybe don't have an attorney that. That knows as much as our. That knows as much as our, um, Kirsten is really knowledgeable since she dealt with this in Denver, which is huge, so.
Well, I was just gonna add though, Julia, to that, so I think you do have. If any power, it's on sighting and distance, so not splitting lotlines, not being in front of buildings. Distance, the distance requirements are imperative and I think it, faster you get stuff like that in place, the better off you're gonna be.
Julia, is there any precedent of anyone losing their historic designation because of one of these?
No, the reason for that is that it is so heavily federally preempted. I mean, there's. Cities across the country have tried to fight back and, um, unsuccessfully.
So we do, um, also have in our design standards and, and the ship I would recommend to you, don't place them in front of historic buildings. Um, you know, you place them on, you know, right where the lot, lotlines are on. So that you're, and placing them on intersections is good, I think as well, but you're not placing them like smack in front of a historic building and. Um, and we've got that throughout the entire town too, outside of the district also, so. Um, we're, so we're not putting it in someone's front window.
Is there conduit to these locations so we wouldn't have to tear all the streets up again?
So they're in, uh, the fiber is in the alleys, it's my understanding, and so these would run down the sides of the street. And connect into the intersections. And Newcom would be running that fiber.
Karen, has Newcom done this in any other resort towns, ski towns, and where else have you guys, uh, worked?
So my, uh, business partner who's on the Zoom, I. He, he has a separate, a separate entity that has built many, many small cells in many different places, including resort towns. Um, they are actually, I believe, um, doing some work in another town whose name shall remain unknown at the moment. Cause I don't know if it's public information yet, but, um.
Oh, what?
Um, I'm not sure it's public information yet, but there's another one that's coming that, um, is, is going to happen. They're having, building small cells. We, Newcom, as an entity, uh, is about four years old. I, Ryan and I both, my partner have been in this industry for thirty years. Um, building sites, doing all pretty much every role that's involved in a network like this. And so. Um, this will be our first network that we own, but we, Newcom as an entity does. A lot of builds for, in the wireless industry, specifically focused on government.
Could we get a list so we could call some references?
Sure. There are some in, um, in the, is that, I don't know if you, Julia, is that included in?
Yeah.
What you distributed, I think, as far as the history. Um, but specifically, um, do you want to talk to, and jurisdictions where small cells have been built?
Yeah, ideally.
Specifically doing some other government work.
Hey Karen, this is, this is Ryan. If I may, I could, I could address this a little bit, it more in detail if you like.
Sure.
Um, so two I'd encourage you to go look at that were just recently built are in the town of Frisco, fourth and Maine and seventh and Maine. Um, they are different in terms of design than what is being proposed for Breckenridge. However, they do match, um, the architecture of the poles in Frisco. So again, a custom application that we built, we actually did the pole construction as well. Uh, meaning we physically fabricated and built those poles. Um, so that would be a really good one that is close to you. Uh, within your own town, we were partnered with a, a, a third-party operator. On some other projects that aren't small cell related, uh, but they do give you some idea of how. How the infrastructure is built from fiber all the way through. Uh, RF and antennas and those locations are like at the Gondola. Uh, base, uh, also at Peak Eight, um, on the mountain of Breckenridge, over at River Run, so they are, they do exist near town already. Those are some of the concepts that you guys have already mentioned, like with some, um, and, you know, wall-mounted antennas. So a little bit different application, but infrastructure remains the same. The stuff that is up at Peak Eight Base is. Um, concealed, so, uh, again, not a small cell, but it is a concealed solution. In terms of other resort towns that we have built, uh, these in, um, Vale is another one, the town of Vale. Um, also in, um, the canyon between, uh, Golden. And Blackhawk, uh, that canyon, there's thirty-eight small cell locations, uh, through that canyon that we built. And like Karen said, there are a couple more in play right now, uh, that we are currently working on. Uh, with this same concept in mind, uh, small cell poles, really, they are fitting in the right way. As Karen mentioned early, that is, that's a real big driver from the carriers. The line of sight thing is, is really. The key component in that, so, um. Be more than happy to give you a list of references if, if need be, but those are some immediate ones that you guys could go and visit if you wanted to.
Thanks, Ryan.
Then.
Yeah, absolutely.
Some more of those are on page eighty-eight of your packet.
Okay, thanks.
Ryan is with Newcom or with the construction company?
Both.
Okay.
He and I have worked together for many, many years in, um, in the industry, I guess, at a larger scale. And so we started Newcom, um, as an entity to pursue govern, really to take, take, um, represent government. Um, in that aspect, Ryan's, um, Mountain Wireless Construction is the other company that he, um, is the company that he actually owns. His family started that many, many years ago, um, Ryan runs that now and they do commercial work. Um, that's, you know, their, their customers are not governments, they're commercial entities.
Can we put them on top of the stoplights?
We asked.
C dot have issues.
Yeah, that's part of it, you know, C dot doesn't like it's my understanding, right? Cause access and it's a lot of equipment you gotta run down.
That's not surprising.
C dot, and the state's making us do this, maybe C dot should be part of it.
Well, C dot doesn't own those lights on Main Street.
Nope, that's ours.
But there's definitely a complication in, I mean, we have looked at that in, in terms of the, I mean, on the outside, it sure seems fine. But interior to the pole gets a little complicated as far as who owns what and who's running what and who needs to do maintenance on different things. Um, it's another, really another level of complication to that setup.
All right, other questions? We have other stuff we gotta get to.
I think I have one more.
This is important.
Design standards, Kirsten, could we, um, uh, make sure that all the equipment is contained within the pole? Is that something municipalities can do?
Yes, I, I think so. I would, our, our design standards have it so that it's either in the pole or. I'm trying to remember, um, it, it can be separated, but in this case, because Main Street is so condensed and crowded already. Um, it's all in this pole, in this design.
And that's written in the code, so there's no risk of.
That probably, if it's not included in the contract. Probably added, I'm sure.
Oh, sorry about that. I am on microphone. Um, I think we would want to add anything that is aesthetics into. The aesthetics, the sighting and the distance should be in the design. Um, guidelines, I don't know what you're referring to them as, Julia, but that would be where I would suggest.
But in the design standard as opposed to in the contract, it's just with us, right? So that it covers any of.
I mean, it could, it could be in both, but more importantly, in the design guidelines.
I think it might already be in there, but. Yeah. Underground equipment is required or in the pole or underground.
Kind of shifting gears, I know we have some, uh, community members that are gonna have some, some huge issues around the, um. Electronic noise, the high frequency, uh, radiation, everything else. What, what data is out there in terms of the safety of that and, um. What kind of assurances if, if we realize something down the road can we get around that, demodification, et cetera?
That's governed by the FCC. Um, a couple of different levels of emission, um, that's managed, I guess, as far as how it's managed to the FCC. One, there are two different levels of, um, that you have to comply with depending on situation. One is called occupational, the other is called public. So occupational means or applies in situations where whoever could potentially come within. A, call it quote unquote, dangerous distance of the antenna that's transmitting. Um, is considered or assumed to be educated in RF. So an HVAC repair person on a rooftop, if an antenna is on a roof, for example, a roofer is expected to know those things because they're a professional roofer. Um, an HVAC repair person is expected to know those things. So then there's a, a standard that complies in those situations. The other standard is called public, it's more stringent because the average person isn't expected to know what they should be aware of or am I okay, am I not okay? So in the pole situation, it's the public standard that would apply. Again, that's more stringent and that basically is a function of frequency, power. And the gain of the antenna, so the style of the antenna, the, the propagation characteristics of the antenna, I guess, is just how I would say. Use it as a general term. So that is the responsibility of the, the owner of the structure. So in this case, that's our responsibility as Newcom to make sure that those, the sum of the power that's transmitted is safe. And if there are situations where, say, maintenance needs to be done, then we would have carriers powered down. If there's work that needs to be done, that means somebody needs to be in front of that antenna, if that makes sense. Uh, but as far as the general public, we would be using directional antennas up and down the street. So that, so you know, the buildings that are, I think the closest building is maybe is ten feet away, based on what we were looking at this morning. That, and so there's nothing pointed at a window of a, you know, that's out there. That's part of the reason for the twenty-five foot change, honestly, probably the biggest reason for the twenty-five foot change from the carrier's perspective. Is they all say, we can't be that low and meet those requirements and, and that's required. All the, all the, I mean, that's not something that carriers, um, brush to the side. It's taken very seriously by carriers and certainly by us.
Who ensures that they, um, are, are in compliance? I mean, is there an inspection entity or does?
There isn't, um, there is no, I guess ultimately the FCC could come out and take measurements. I've never heard of that happening. Um, unless there's a complaint that's filed, you know, there have certainly have been, and that.
We might have some complaints.
Come on now, we haven't even had a chance to build them yet.
Seems unregulated.
Have any history of any issues, health issues, people getting in front of it and.
Not, I, I mean, I certainly am not prepared to speak to the larger, you know, whatever may have been, um, taken place out there. I am not aware of specific situations with small cell poles. Small, one thing fundamentally about small cells, they're lower power. So what you see as on, on a rooftop, for example, or a, a tower. A full-blown tower up on the mountain type of a situation, very different power situation. The, the radios physically cannot transmit any higher than, you know, a certain max.
Thank you for answering all the questions.
How, how do we feel about a ten-year contract with Newcom? I mean, this is sort of a separate, I mean.
Well, what happens if the technology changes and?
That's, that's the question. I mean, it's not.
Partner with you on that too, I just.
I will say this, things have, if nothing else, gotten smaller over the years. Things, I mean, again, I'm not gonna wood. Um, I've been in this business since we had one radio for one voice call that was literally this big. One radio. And that's if you each want to make a call, each of you need a radio.
Yeah.
So, you know, over the last thirty years, even from four G to five G, tremendous advances in terms of size and form factor that's available. And they're getting nothing but smaller. So I, again, I, I don't know what six G or next G or whatever will look like. Um, but we see it tracking nothing but smaller, like I said.
I think in a nutshell, that's what makes this pill so hard to swallow is that these are so big. And it feels like technology should be moving.
Well, and I was told that I was getting five G when I got my vaccination. That's what I was told. All right, any other questions? What's our next step now?
This does not take any official action on the council. It takes you, what it takes is for you to be comfortable and tell me to sign the agreement.
I had a number of comments that went over with Kirsten. I don't need to take everyone's time, but.
Yeah.
It's, it's all kind of.
I mean, what, I think that we've got to get back in front of you ASAP with the revised. Cause no matter what, we want to get those in place ASAP. And then I think, I don't. I don't, I don't know. Are four of you ready to say yes right now?
Is there any language, Karen, I'll ask you this and Kirsten, this, is there any way to build in? Some kind, you know, some kind of flexibility, ability to renegotiate pieces that are substantially changed by the technology? In the next ten years into this, this agreement, into this contractual agreement? I don't know if that question makes sense or not.
Well, I guess, um, so I'm certainly not deflecting, but I will say that Tim Berry did spend a lot of time on this. Um, maybe even up to a year before I came, I have looked at it, but maybe speak to the, the purpose of the ten-year term. I, I don't know what the thinking was there.
I think the tenure term was because Newcom is gonna put forth a substantial financial investment into the polls.
Yeah.
The agreement, I don't believe, you know, shows the polls or anything specifically. So, um. You know, if something were to, it's their right, you know, to have this right away use and. Kind of the town's buy-in for this plan, should the. Holes change or some of the technology change, I think that that's a, that's sort of a staff level change.
The FCC changes the roles and all of a sudden we can't co-locate, you know, it's just, there's so many unknowns in this to go ten years.
I think working with somebody like Newcom is better for us to do this. I think they're out there doing heavy lifting, negotiating, they build those relationships. There were, I believe, three different vendors that we interviewed and we were the most comfortable with them. And, and during those interviews and, uh, even though they may not have had the same level of experience as a couple of the other ones. Um, they just brought, uh, better attitude to the table. And, um, you know, I think that it improved. You know, one of the reasons we have invested millions of dollars as a community to put fiber in the ground was to be prepared for this type of. Technology also. And I, that is equally as important to me that we are working a relationship with, uh. ALO to make sure that we're utilizing town fiber. And I think some of these other ones tend to just run the sentry link if they come in on their own. Which is what's going on in a lot of places.
And that will happen with the carriers, I mean.
Sentry link?
No, well, sentry link or Comcast or, uh, choose a carrier, but it's unlikely to be ALO, I would say. I don't, I'm not aware that any of the carriers have master agreements with ALO.
It has been communicated to you that ALO is important for us.
But the fiber use of the town fiber is part, integrally, integrally part of our commitment and our agreement in terms of.
And so you could encourage that, is that what?
Would, how, logistically, how it would work is we would lease the fiber from ALO and then when the carrier signs an agreement with us, they're leasing both. The tower, you know, spacing the pole and also use of the fiber. It's, it's a package deal, which for them again is another, it's another plus to a carrier because that's one more thing they have to deal with separately is. You know, try and get sentry link or Comcast or whatever it might be to, to build to where they need.
So you're offering a turnkey.
Exactly.
Maybe what we need to do, I, you, there's a few things you said you want, I know you were talking with, uh, the town attorney today. You want, you'd like to see a few little tweaks. So maybe what we can do is let's work through those, we'll give a quick update again. You know, let this percolate a little bit and we'll have a decision for you in two weeks.
Well, we can't do anything until we look at the design standards anyway, right?
No, 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 you certainly can because, yes.
Oh, we can, okay.
We, I mean, they're waiting, they've been waiting patiently. We need to get an agreement signed so they can start negotiating these. Right, these deals, uh, knowing, you know, we already have the pole standards built into this contract. We need to formalize those design standards so that anybody else that comes in that is, is bypassing. This at least has, has to work with those design standards.
Right now, they meet or exceed the existing design standards.
I mean, so if you, if you're not ready, I, I think the sooner the better, but.
I don't want to hold up. I don't know that anything I had was that substantive. Did, did you, Kirsten?
Um, well, I think you made a lot of good points and I think those delivered into, I mean, the design standards are really important. And it's your call as to whether you want to go with a third party, but I, I do think the faster you move and getting things in place, the better off you. I mean, someone could come in today and ask for a permit and you're gonna be faced with issuing it in ninety days.
Two weeks?
That could happen whether we have something done or not.
It could happen either way.
That's why this whole thing.
Is two weeks critical to you, Karen? Or can you wait another two weeks?
That feels like a loaded question. We have been patiently waiting, haven't we? I appreciate that acknowledgement. If we, if we have a decision in two weeks, I think we can work with that.
I really appreciate that you guys made the time to come up here and meet with us in person. That is a big game changer, I think, for many of the people on council, so.
We've, we've talked from the very beginning. We are local Coloradans. We enjoy time up in Breckenridge, like, you know, we don't live here, but we enjoy time here and we very much appreciate and respect what you were working to maintain and we really have made a great effort to try to find a balance.
I'd sign the thing right now, but I've had a head injury, so. Hot too, hot in head, but I, I'd go with it, you know, I, I think it, it's inevitable. I think we're going to do it eventually. And we might as well just rip off the Band-Aid. And, and it's not Pissa, it's not perfect, but uh, I think, I think we're stuck with it. That's my feeling.
Lose, lose. Yeah, that's what this is.
I would sign it as well. I think that.
But pass it on first reading and tweak it between.
There's no reading, there's no reading.
You just have to tell Rick he can sign the contract. I just think, I mean, especially with the ALO piece and just with them wanting to work with us, I think that the benefits outweigh the negatives.
I'm fine with it too, with, you know, as long as you guys are right with me, working with Kirsten on some of these little tweaks. I mean, I mean, it'll be quick. She's already scanned my, my notes and looked at them and.
I think we should run that by Kirsten.
What we haven't done is talk to Newcom about.
Yeah, I don't think any of them are earth shaking. I've already talked about, I think, all of them, so. It, you gave some enlightenment that some of them will just get scrapped, so I, I'm fine. I, I'm okay past that too. I, you know, I, I think we can all do a couple of minor tweaks and get it done.
Design standards tightened up.
Design standards are big, but they already exceed.
That has to come in front of the council and ordinance, right? I don't know if we, I don't think we can be ready next meeting.
I will start it tomorrow. No, it's already, it's pretty much already done. I just needed a, a poll, okay?
But these guys have presented already exceed the design standards, so I, I think we can do that simultaneously.
I would wait two weeks, but that's, I'm the only one, so there you go.
Yeah.
I should have vetoed.
You're like, I'm not.
I'm learning today, I would give you, learning today that I need some kind of veto power. Okay.
We will work to, we will work to finalize the agreement and then enter into that, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Let's. I know, but I want to, let's make the motion now and then we'll go grab food and come back in, okay?
All right, Carol.
The town council go into executive session for several matters under separate sections of state law governing authorizing, authorizing the town council to meet an executive section pursuant to paragraph four A, B, C, and E, I of section 24, six, four oh two CRS.
Motion has been made for the town council to go into an executive session pursuant to paragraph four A of section 24, six, four oh two CRS relating to the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale any real personal or other property interest. Paragraph four B of section 24, six, four oh two CRS relating to conferences with the town attorney for purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions and paragraph four C, matters required to keep, be kept confidential by federal or state laws or rules and regulations. Paragraph four E, one or I determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations and instructing negotiators. Subject of the executive session includes developing strategies for negotiations and instructing negotiators concerning land that the town may have, town council may have an interest in leasing to FERC. Developing strategies for negotiations and instructing negotiators concerning land that the town council may have an interest in selling to the BOEC. Developing strategies for negotiations and instructing negotiators concerning land that the town council may have an interest in acquiring for open space. Confidential discussion with the town attorney concerning specific legal issues pertaining to short-term rental regulations impact on certain land use approvals. Discussion with the town manager and town attorney pertaining to fight confidential matters that the town and a third-party entity under the Colorado Dispute Resolution Act, CRS 13 dash 22 dash 301 et sec. Roll call.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Yes. Yes. And we got two missing. One, two, three, four, five. We got this.
Nice.
I always like a happy hour instead of a full blown, yeah.
Let's call the word of the town of Breckenridge Town Council Regular Meeting, Tuesday, March 8th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Ms. Sade.
Here.
Mr. Bergeron.
Beloved.
Ms. Owens. Mr. Coon.
Here.
Ms. Giello. Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
Town Council members for 22nd of February, any changes tonight? Everybody good without a minute stand as presented? Approval of the agenda, Rick?
No changes.
Agenda stands as presented. We have communications to council. We start with citizens' comments, three minutes in length. Non-agenda items only. Anybody wish to tell us off this evening? Communication citizen comment is closed. We have Breckenridge Tourism Office update with the one and only Lucy Kay.
Hello, Lucy.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be quick since I took a long time last time. Was that me? I'm sorry. Couple of things. I wanted to take a minute and talk about some of the macro level travel sentiment, things that are moving in light of everything that's changing in the world these days. Destination analysts, which is, they survey 1,200 people every week. Eighty-four percent of their respondents are saying they're ready to travel. Half of them, fully half of them are saying they're not going to travel internationally outbound because of what's happening, so that is good for the domestic market. Interestingly, 70% of them still want to see COVID protocols in place, which is surprising. I thought it was really high number. Longwood, similar numbers. They've got 92% of their people have travel plans. This is like looking forward just for the next three to six months. So summer, we're looking at this stuff for summer. 60% of them are already saying inflation, especially gas prices are going to impact their travel plans. You know, gas prices go up every summer, but this is different, obviously, with what's going on right now. So we should expect higher price sensitivity for the summer. Denver is still down compared to 19, their last normal year, but even though they're down, Denver is consistently the third busiest airport in the world. Which speaks to how much the other airports have fallen off. So like New York, LA, San Francisco tanked because they have so much international business. We didn't have that much international, so we are number three in the world right now, which is a little crazy when you think about it. Then just quickly on lodging, I'm going to combine a bunch of things here. We are running for February, March, and the winter as a whole, roughly we're running 17% over last year, which was a down year. We're flat, pretty much flat to the winter of 1920, which was the last normal winter. And at this point in time, we were still normal, looking at DMX. So for the winter, we're actually down 3,000 room nights, which isn't that big of a deal. But so we're, you know, even with a normal year and about 17% up over last year, it just looking at it overall, for the peak week of spring break, the 12th through the 19th, we're at about 90% for most of those days, which is normal. And April is running way ahead of last year because of where Easter falls and with the long, you know, extended season. For summer, summer bookings are looking good. We don't have the whole, the full season on the book yet, but groups are coming back. So we've got Colorado Municipal League is back, case is back. So that's driving a lot of the increases. Kelly, you had asked about Oktoberfest. That's the 23rd through the 25th. What we're doing with that right now, I'm, I'm working to see, make sure we have a sponsor or proper beer partner. And then the next step will be to make sure we can get enough employees because we need almost 400 people to work that event. If those two things are a go, then we'll move forward. So we're planning as if it's going to happen, but it's, it's not a final thing yet. Then, so given all the changes, what, what we're, what the BTO is doing right now is we're going in, we're reconvening our marketing committee. And then at our board meeting later this month, we're really reevaluating our summer plan. On the management side, really in light of the conversation in the last council meeting, you know, taking into account what's going to happen with construction and traffic and things like that, and thinking about how do we tweak our messaging a little more, make sure we get the pre-arrival stuff, get the lodges on board to work with us on that piece. And then now with everything that's happening in Europe, you know, we're really relooking at what's going to happen with marketing. So we will have a few more contingency plans in our quiver. So whatever things look like in May and June, well, I'm sure we're not going to do the plan that we have in place right now. We'll just have a few more in the works. And then the last thing I'll leave you with is we have scheduled our annual meeting. It'll be June 16th. And Tim Wolfe, who's the new director of the Colorado Tourism Office, is going to be our keynote speaker for that.
Cool.
So any questions? Comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy.
Two question askers are not here. We have no continued business. We have no new business. We do have planning commission decisions from March 2nd. Are there any call-ups this evening? Planning commission decisions stand as presented. A report of town manager and staff, Rick?
Just real quickly, if you, any of you read the recent article in the newspaper about what both Dylan and Chris Cor are looking at with their seasonal summer employees and increasing the, from $15 an hour or $17 an hour and you know, in our budget, I believe a lot of our positions were 15, 15, 50. So you know, we're meeting and looking, but we're going to have to be competitive and we can't, I mean, be below them and that. So as long as I have your blessing, it'll, you know, we've got to react to this quickly and we, we're starting to post positions. So I'll have to come back to you at some point and let you know what the budget impact is on that, but I think it's something that we have to do.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Great. We've reported mayor and council members. We went to a cast meeting. Unfortunately, there weren't a lot of other electeds there. There were a lot of, a lot of town managers showed up. It was still, uh, still good. We heard a bunch of economic analysis and we were down at your old stomping grounds, which was, it's always fun. And yeah, it was, it was a good one. Little networking, but not, not too much, unfortunately. I really did want to talk to the mayors from the epic past areas, but there weren't enough of them there to have any kind of discussion. So. So, open space.
We had a meeting last Monday and we had an update about forest health projects that are planned for the summer. One is with Summit County at the People D Plaza and one with town that includes Airport Road and Shock Hill areas. We had a presentation on the cucumber gulch preserve annual report just from econ metrics presented, the 2021 annual report, which largely showed no difference in our metrics for groundwater and biodiversity. Our naturalists were a huge success in reaching people in the preserve and providing environmental educational tours, which are, yeah, just I underline that wildly popular. Yeah, just interesting to learn about the beavers and their success story. But yeah, and Bosac did bring up a good point of, you know, maybe at some point, taking a look at these grades and seeing if we're continuing to look at the right stuff with cucumber gulch because at the beginning, a lot changed, right? We got, we tackled all the low lying fruit and now our grading seems to be evening out, grading as in like score, our scores. So it was an interesting conversation. We had a presentation about the state of the open space for 2021. Staff presented a quick report highlighting our program accomplishments for 2021. Of note, we tipped over the 5,000 acre threshold with protected lands, 5,073 to be exact. And now we have 64.5 miles of trails in our network. Our focus has largely been on stewardship, stewardship and maintenance, which is great. We discussed BIFA, which we talked about. We talked about the trails that we talked about today and the master plan update. And the open house happened. Some people were there. And then also, we spent a big couple of weeks for open space. Yesterday, we conducted 11 interviews for candidates for the three open Bosac openings on, on Bosac seats. Thank you. And we're still deliberating on, on who the chosen ones are. So yeah, any questions? 11, yeah, 11 for three spots and there are three incumbents. So that's.
Oh, that's hard.
That's, yeah, it's hard.
Karen, didn't they estimate that the naturalists reached like 9,500 people?
I think so.
Scott, do you know?
Isn't that the number?
There's a lot of people.
It was 6,500. It was a huge number of people. That was a lot of super impressive.
Which, if you're not aware, yeah, these tours seem to be a great hit, which is I think a big, yeah, I, I just think it's a big step toward that sweet spot of, you know, educating people about our resources and how to treat our lands. I think tourists. Yeah, I mean, not too long ago, it was just a pilot program and it's really taken off, so.
It's awesome. Cool. Tourism, anything to add?
We heard from Lucy and she is the queen.
About Breckenridge history?
Breckenridge history. We have a board meeting tomorrow at noon, which will be discussing Milney Park and how to proceed with that. We also, the really good news is we have a contractor that is going to, that's promising us he'll work to stabilize Sally Barber this summer. And the signs will go back up at Sally Barber. So hopefully we'll get.
Who's contractor?
I don't have it in here. I'll know tomorrow. I think it's somebody Larry Chris Bell got pulled out of his back pocket.
I thought it was Larry.
Larry and I talked about he and Peter and I going up and doing that. We decided that's not a good idea.
Awesome. Thank you. Breckenridge Creative Arts. Is everybody going to shorten their name? Should that just be Breckenridge Creative now?
I don't know. Dick is actually the person that you're looking at.
You're always there and it says, it says on here, it says Ms. Owens on the sheet.
It's not me, but um, Tamara was here and I thought we got a terrific presentation.
There you go. Events.
Oh boy, I covered. If you dare, if you dare to ask any questions.
If we're going to have an events update on the work session, we could take it off of the back.
I think that's a good idea.
I agree. But really, I welcome your questions.
But child care, can I ask you?
You can. Thank you so much for being interested, but we did already talk about it. I feel like we covered.
Right. It's all about the kids. I'd like to hear about workforce, but Carlton's not here. And social equity. Beautiful. All right. Other matters. I got two quick things. Rick and I met with Bill Rock and Jody Church from Vale Resorts and chatted about a number of things, including trying to get some better information for them as we work through this overcrowding metric. You know, they're very close to the vest with how many people are on their mountain at any one time. But I told them, we can't, you know, we can't answer these questions if we don't know something. We don't know if you're busier or not as busy or the same. And then we talked about housing a little bit and got some, for the first time ever, some interest in spending some money to help with housing. So that was great.
Also had a talk with Jody two days ago. Wanted to know how I felt about writing a joint letter, letter to the editor, sort of thanking everybody for COVID. And I told her I would ask you.
I wouldn't pose it that way.
We know what you mean.
About how we handled COVID. Thanking everybody for getting the 5G shot. How do you feel about that? Or would you rather we stay separate?
I think it sounds great. I think a little goodwill will go a long way.
Sure.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I think it shows some unity.
Any other matters?
I, Carol and I had a really good talk with some teachers in Summit County and just the hardships that they're facing, you know, training their coworkers year after year and people leaving for mostly housing reasons. So. mostly housing reasons. So I did meet with Kate Hednett this morning and of course, we didn't have any specific conversations. But if we could talk to them about some sort of partnership or some, you know, I don't know if we wanted to talk to them about reserving some units for rentals or anything like that, I would be very supportive of.
Did they want to donate that little parcel of land to?
I did not talk specifically about land donation.
I mean, we need to talk to them specifically because we have talked to them multiple times about doing joint housing things and they, that they never want to do it because they're always worried what the next board will say. So they need to break through that.
Came up in the housing meeting today and the, Dick's strategy, because he talked, so the same Stiefel who does our COP financing is working with the Eagle County School District to do, they're building their own housing projects. And he really wants to take a run at this again when the new superintendent's on board.
Oh, great.
That we should continue. I mean, that superintendent will be part of, you know, the mayor's managers and commissioners. And I think we should continue to push hard. They just are setting on so much land that they just are afraid to do anything with.
At some point, they're going to have to do that, so.
Well, on that note, the superintendent interviews are on Friday. You can watch them. I don't know, maybe Friday night, Saturday morning.
There's three.
There's three.
Saturday, what?
That's what I was told. I'm just passing along the information.
Any other matters? We go to the order? Or adjourned. You know what? And Karen, and Erin took up 10 minutes of that, by the way.